David?
Called order.
Commissioner Noble. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen.
Here.
Commissioner Spildee.
Here.
Commissioner Flynn.
Here.
Commissioner Belos- Beloski.
Here.
Alright, third order of business is election of the officers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at this point, what we need to do is to receive nominations from the floor to appoint the chairman, and then after that nomination process is finished, we'll move on to first vice chairperson and second. So nominations from the floor, if you get more than one nomination, we're gonna need to do a vote, we can do that by ballot vote, handwritten vote, you can do it out loud. If there's only one nomination, that person will automatically be appointed as the chairperson. So let's start with chair as to nominations.
Okay, Mike Noble for chair.
Second.
Any other nominations for chair? Okay, so then, Mr. Chair, for this meeting, you're the chair of this meeting, you need to declare that Mr. Noble is the chairman of the planning commission at this point.
Okay, I declare that Mike Noble is the chairperson.
We don't need a vote since there was only one nomination. Next, you need to get nominations for first vice chairperson. Any nominations?
Dave Lawrence.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Chairman, you need to appoint yourself as first vice chairperson then tonight.
Alright, I appoint myself as first vice chairperson?
Alright.
That felt kinda weird.
Then you need to take nominations for second vice chairperson.
Sunny Flynn.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Since there are none, you can declare her as the elected second vice chairperson.
Sunny is second vice chair.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. And then we move on to number four, approval of the minutes for July 11th, 2016, and September 12th, 2016.
I motioned to approve the minutes for July 11th and September 12th of 2016.
I'll second that motion.
Anything else we need to say on that, or?
Any discussion on the minutes?
Any discussion?
If not, you can call for the vote, all in favor?
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It looked like it was unanimous. Okay?
New business? Ordinance 2017-01?
And I'll kind of try to lead you through this process at this point.
Okay.
You're gonna be hearing a couple of items relative to this ordinance 2017-01 tonight. You're gonna hear the ordinance, that particular ordinance, and a presentation on that that's rezoning from plan development PD to plan development PD, the applicant will explain that to you, and then we're gonna go ahead and have you consider the application for entering into a development agreement between the City of Madeira Beach and Madeira Beach Town Center LLC. What we'd like to do is to present the staffing on both of those matters at the same time so it's not repetitious for the board and for the public, and if, any objections to that, Mrs. Wells? Okay. And so I'm gonna go ahead and read this ordinance by title only, and then I wanna talk to you about the process that we're gonna need to go through. So ordinance 2017-01, I'm gonna read it by title only, an ordinance set at the City of Madeira Beach, Florida rezoning certain real property generally described as 15026 Madeira Way, 0 Gulf Boulevard, 0 150th Avenue, 15023 Gulf Boulevard, 15031 Gulf Boulevard, 0 Madeira Way, 15,000 Madeira Way, 15,006 Madeira Way, 15,015 Madeira Way, 15,040 Madeira Way, 15,042 Madeira Way, 0 150th Avenue, 200 150th Avenue, 206 150th Avenue, 210 150th Avenue, 212 150th Avenue, 352 150th Avenue, 388 150th Avenue, 390 150th Avenue, 410 150th Avenue, 420 150th Avenue, from Plan Development PD to Plan Development PD District, providing for reading by title only, providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of ordinance 2017-01 by title only. Now, we're gonna be treating this meeting tonight as a quasi judicial proceeding, and when that happens, there's a process that we need to follow, and I just wanna go through it briefly with you. I wanna give you the summary of the application, the standards to be applied, the burden of proof, the parties, who they are, and the order of their presentations, and then I wanna talk to you about rebuttal and summary after that. But the first thing I need to do is to make sure that none of you have had any ex parte communications with the applicant or anyone else with regard to either one of these matters tonight, the rezoning ordinance, or the application for entering into a development agreement, and if you have had them, if you could briefly tell us who they were with, and the summary or substance of those conversations, or if you've had emails have you, or letters have you, that you've received, if you can explain what they consisted of, and if you have copies of them tonight, that would be even better. Has there been any ex parte contact? See, everybody's shaking their head, no. Okay, so, start with the summary of the application. The proposal is for a mixed-use project that will include two hotels, 316 rooms, two condominium buildings, 90 units, and 10 units on top of Hotel B, 37,000 square feet of retail space, 16,000 square feet of restaurant space, and a marina. The proposed project is located on both sides of Madeira Way, Gulf Boulevard, and Tom Stewart Causeway, also known as 150th Avenue. The project will feature a publicly accessible plaza on Gulf Boulevard and 150th Avenue intersection, pedestrian accesses to Bugasi Aga Bay, a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard, and pedestrian enhancements along Madeira Way and 150th Avenue to the city's Causeway Park. The plan also includes offsite roadway improvements that are included in the development agreement. The standards to be applied of the evidence are set forth in Section 110-391 of your code the applicant will be going through, and so will city staff, each one of those standards that you need to apply to these applications. The burden of proof is the greater weight of the evidence, and that's also set forth in your code as Section 2-10A. The parties are the applicant, Madeira Beach Town Center LLC, and Madeira Commons Inc. They will present first. It will be followed by a presentation by the city, and five people have filed forms claiming that they are affected parties, and I wanna go through the order that they will make their presentations. The order is based upon pursuant to your code, the date and time when they were received by the city clerk. They are as follows, John Lipa, Larry Roloffs, William Gay, Stephen Miller, and Sam Baker. After those affected parties present their cases, you will hear from people in the audience who are not parties. You will then have and hear rebuttal by the applicant and the city if any, and then there will be a brief summary by the applicant and the city if any. And with that, I need to swear everyone under oath that is gonna be speaking tonight. So, if anyone that wants to speak tonight, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, and let me go ahead and swear you under oath. Everyone that's gonna speak. You swear that the testimony that you're gonna give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, at this point, the applicant needs to move forward with the presentation of their case.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable members of the Commission. My name is Kate Wells. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable members of the Commission. My name is Kate Wells. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Shoemaker, Loop &amp; Kendrick at 101 East Kennedy Boulevard in Tampa, Florida. I did want to, for the record, object to two of the five petitions requesting party status. We do not object to the petitions filed by Mr. Lipa, Mr. Roloffs, or Mr. Gay. Each person is located within the notice area, we do not challenge their requests. However, we do object to the petitions filed by Mr. Miller and Mr. Baker. Neither Mr. Miller nor Mr. Baker are located within the notice area, and the petitions filed do not articulate how either individual meets the definition of affected party status. More specifically, neither individual articulated how an interest protected or furthered by the comprehensive plan is adversely impacted by the proposed development, or how this adverse impact exceeds in degree from that of the general interest of the community. And I apologize for the technical nature of why we're objecting to this, but that is the standard that is required by your code, as well as in Florida statutes, with regard to individuals that would like to be considered aggrieved or adverse parties. Mr. Miller's residence from the address that was included on the petition is located 1,500 feet from our site. Mr. Baker's address is over 4,000 feet from our site, and we, I've got some graphs that depict those locations, just so you have it for the record. So unless they're able to articulate how they meet your standard in the code, we would object to them being granted that status.
Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Wells is walking that around, I wanna talk to you a little bit about the code and the state statute, some of which was cited by Ms. Wells. Section 2.7 of your code says, "The parties to quasi judicial proceeding shall be the applicant, the city, and any affected person who files a notice of intent to be a party with the city community development department not less than five days prior to the commencement of the hearing. Forms for a notice of intent shall be provided by the department upon request." Paragraph C of that same section says, "Any person who files a notice of intent to be a party shall be presumed to be an affected person unless the status of that person is challenged by another party. In this event, the board shall determine whether or not the person who claims to be an affected person is an affected person as defined herein." So at some time during this proceeding, it's gonna be necessary for the board to make a determination whether or not these two individuals are affected persons. My suggestion is that we move through the entire process, since they are the last two people that are considered affected parties at this point, have them step up, make their argument to the board as to why they, first of all, believe they're an affected person, and then we can make the determination at that point. We won't allow them to put on their case, just allow them to make an argument as to whether they're an affected person or not. So that's my suggestion, that we wait until that time to do that, then we can flow through. And then ultimately, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna be your call. It's not gonna be the board, you're not gonna be taking a motion, you're gonna be making that decision. And the reason that you're making the decision is because that's what your code provides you to do. It says, "The presiding officer shall act on behalf of the board and shall respond to motions or other matters with assistance with the city attorney." So ultimately, you're gonna be making that decision as we come along. So, I would suggest that we go through it, Kate, and then when we get to them, let them step up and make their argument. Okay?
Thank you. So before we get started, I wanted to take a moment to introduce our team. On behalf of the applicant, Madeira Beach Town Center, is Bill Carnes, Kevin Bowden, and Scott Brainard. Also present this evening is Tim Clemmons, a registered architect with Mesh Architecture, Robert Pergalisi, a professional transportation planner with Gulf Coast Consulting, and Cindy Tera Paney, a professional urban planner with Florida Design Consultants Incorporated. For those of you who are on the commission in March and April of this year, this project will look familiar. That is because this commission recommended approval of the rezoning application and development agreement that resulted in a final approval by the Board of Commissioners on June 14th, 2016, for a project that allowed two 11-story hotels with up to 430 rooms, two eight-story condominium buildings with up to 90 units, a marina development, and up to 50,000 square feet of retail and/or restaurant uses. Notwithstanding the approvals obtained in June, my client, in response to concerns expressed by members of the community, made a business decision to redesign this project to comply with the standards of development permitted prior to the 2014 amendments to the comprehensive plan and the special area plan, and to start the process anew. My client is seeking to rezon the property from plan development to plan development, and enter into a new development agreement, which if approved by the Board of Commissioners, will supersede and replace the development rights granted on June 14th, 2016. Since we're starting the process anew, and in compliance with the city's code, we held not one but two neighborhood meetings on Tuesday, December 6th, at noon and again at 6:00 PM. And as Mr. Trask advised, tonight's hearing is a quasi judicial land use hearing. As the city's planning commission, you are charged with reviewing development applications and making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. The purpose of the hearing is not to generally explore how people feel about the kind of use that is being proposed, or whether the regulations go far enough or too far. The purpose of the hearing is to fairly, even-handedly, and impartially determine whether we have met the city's standards. This is done through testimony evidence, both oral and written, introduced into the record of tonight's hearing. As Mr. Trask advised, the appropriate quality of evidence is competent substantial evidence on the issue of whether our application meets the code requirements. Competent substantial evidence is the only type of evidence that this commission, as a recommending body, may consider. As the hearing progresses, and you hear testimony from your staff, from members of my client's professional consulting team, and from the public, you should ask yourself, is the testimony fact-based, material, and reliable? And is the testimony relevant to whether the application complies with the criteria in the code? Conversely, is the testimony hypothetical? Is it based upon speculation or fear? Or is the testimony emotional generalized statements that do not specifically address the criteria in the code? This type of testimony is not competent substantial evidence that can be relied upon in making a rezoning decision, and is not relevant in the review of a rezoning application. Your decision cannot be based upon personal preferences, or comments you may overhear in public, or what you may hear or read in the media. Your role in a quasi judicial proceeding requires you to review our project against the city's regulatory framework. This includes the city's comprehensive plan, the special area plan, and the city's land development code, and to decide if we establish compliance with the code by competent and substantial evidence. The criteria to be met are set forth in Section 110-391. Each member of our team will provide testimony and documentary evidence, which we believe establishes by competent substantial evidence that our project complies with each of the applicable criteria. In addition, your materials include a staff report and an addendum, which provides a detailed analysis as to how our application complies with the code and recommends approval of our application. The second application for your consideration is the application for a development agreement, which was negotiated with the city in connection with the rezoning application. Section 163.3227 Florida statutes and Section 86-145 of the city's code require a development agreement to include certain items. I will briefly describe each item and confirm that those sections of the development agreement that address and comply with each item. The development agreement must include a legal description of the land subject to the agreement, and the names of its legal and equitable owners. This can be found in Exhibit A of the development agreement. The development agreement must establish the duration of the agreement. This is set forth in Section 4. It confirms that the duration of the agreement, and provides that it will terminate upon the earlier of either the date on which all phases of construction are complete, and a valid certificate of occupancy is issued for the final phase of development, or 15 years from the commencement date. The development agreement must identify the development uses, which will be permitted on the land, including population densities, and building intensities and height. This is found in Exhibit D. The same exhibit was included in the notices and the advertisement for tonight's hearing. The development agreement must include a description of public facilities that will service the development. This is addressed in Sections 10 and 11. The development agreement must include a description of any reservation or dedication of land for public purposes. This will be found in Paragraph M, Section 9.9, and Exhibit F. The development agreement must include a description of all local development permits approved or required to be approved for the development of the land. This can be found in Paragraph P and Section 12. The development agreement must include a finding that the development permitted or proposed is consistent with the local government's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. This can be found in Paragraph L. The development agreement must include a description of any conditions, terms, restrictions, or other requirements determined to be necessary by the local government for the public health, safety, or welfare of its citizens. These conditions are included throughout the agreement, including but not limited to Paragraph P, Section 9, including Sections 9.1 through 9.11, Section 13, which sets forth the impact fees, and Exhibit C, which sets forth the offsite roadway improvements. The development agreement must include a statement indicating that the failure of the agreement to address a particular permit, condition, term, or restriction shall not relieve the developer of the necessity of complying with the law governing said permitting requirements, conditions, term, or restriction. This can be found in Section 6. And finally, the development agreement may provide that the entire development, or any phase thereof, be commenced or completed within a specific period of time. Paragraph M and Section 9.7 describe the phasing plan. It allows the property to be developed in five separate phases. It allows for more than one phase of development at any one time. It requires my client to apply for a building permit for the first phase of development within three years of the commencement date, and requires my client to thereafter file an application for building permit for each subsequent phase within three years of the immediately preceding phase of development. That's how we came up with the 15-year duration period, five phases, three years. Since this development will be completed in phases, my client is required to obtain site plan approval for each individual phase of development before construction permits are issued. There are certain site plan requirements in Section 110.71, such as a detailed landscaping and lighting plan, as well as a certified construction cost estimate that will be addressed in detail for each phase of development prior to permitting. Paragraph P, subsection 11 of the development agreement, requires final approval of each individual site plan by the community services department. So there are certain aspects of the site plan that are not being presented this evening because those will be detailed, assuming we receive approval at the end of this process. Those will be detailed in individual site plans for each phase of development. Before I turn the presentation over to Mr. Clemmons, I would like to submit the resumes for Mr. Clemmons, Mr. Pergalisi, and Ms. Tera Paney into the record. At the beginning of each of their presentations, they will give you a brief overview of their professional experience, credentials, and qualifications. At that point in the hearing, I would like the commission to accept each of them as expert witnesses in their respective areas of experience. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Clemmons. Thank you.
Alright. Can we bring the screen down? Can you just hang on just a moment? I'll go ahead and just introduce myself while we're waiting for the screen to come down. I'm sorry? Yes. So, my name is Tim Clemmons. I'm the senior principal with Mesh Architecture, and we're located at 33 Sixth Street South in St. Petersburg. And I'm the registered architect with 30 years' experience. And the main body of my work is urban mixed-use projects similar to this. Is Nick no longer here?
He's here. Nick, you may need to step out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm gonna do a brief presentation that sort of takes you through the master plan, and as part of this, I'm also going to compare it to the previous master plan that we submitted back in, before you, in March of April of this year, so you can see where we've made revisions in terms of complying with the special area plan requirements prior to the 2014 amendments. So, here's an aerial view of Madeira Beach, of the entire town, and I've highlighted in yellow the two parcels that we'll be discussing tonight. I think you're all pretty familiar with your community. Here's a little bit of a close-up. So we've got, actually, there's multiple parcels, but they're consolidated into two properties separated by Madeira Way. The triangular parcel is about 2.1 acres, and the L-shaped property is about 4.6 acres. Total, we have right at 6.7 acres between the two properties. And here's the master plan that we're proposing. It divides, the property is divided into five parcels, which represent the five phases of the project, and from right to left, on the north side of 150th Avenue, the first parcel is the marina and dock master building, although the marinas slips themselves extend across the entire waterfront. The access point is at the east end of the property. Adjacent to that is Condo A. This one's a little bit unique in that it is, you see the dotted line with the arrows pointing saying Commercial Core District pointing to the left, and Causeway District pointing to the right. This is where the zoning change occurs in the property, whereas after the 2014 amendments, or in accordance with the 2014 amendments, we're able to blend the two properties in terms of the zoning for the, under the 2009 special area plan. That's an important line in terms of the change of zoning and some of the provisions between those. And I'm gonna discuss each project a little bit more in detail, so right now, I just wanna give you the larger overall picture. Condo B is to the east of that. Both condo buildings are five-story, I'm sorry, six-story buildings with four levels of condominium units over two levels of parking. As you come around to Madeira Way, and turn onto Madeira Way, to the, to the north, to your right, is Hotel A, and then across Madeira Way on the triangular property is Hotel B. The general goals of this master plan are very similar to what we showed you previously, in that we want it to be a truly mixed-use district that is consistent and complies with all of the goals of the special area plan, in terms of really creating a town center concept for the community. So, to those ends, we've introduced retail and restaurant space, we've got residential space, we've got hotels, which are a special goal of the special area plan. We've also got the marina and the rebuilt boat slips, as well as a number of public improvements and public amenities throughout the project. Here's the previous master plan, and again, you can see that there's a lot of similarities, but the major difference is where the dock master building here is between Condo A and Condo B. In the new plan, you can see that the dock master building is adjacent to Causeway Park. And again, that's largely in response And again, that's largely in response to the change in the zoning district between Commercial Core and Causeway District and just the way the densities are calculated and allocated. So we relocated, but actually, although we did it in response to a specific regulatory requirement, in my mind, it actually is a betterment to the plan in that as you come over the Causeway Bridge, the Tom Stewart Causeway, it actually keeps the low scale of the park and extends that another 300 feet further so that the Marina and Dockmaster Building sort of psychologically feels like an extension of the parkland as you come over the bridge. It also allows the two condominium buildings to have a close relationship to each other. And so in those two ways, we think that this is actually a betterment to the plan. But overall, you can see that the two hotel buildings are very, very similar. The biggest change here is whereas Madeira Way showed parallel parking on both sides of the street here, and there's 80 feet between the face of Hotel A and Hotel B, in the new plan, we've preserved the diagonal parking on the north side of Madeira Way, and we've actually pushed back Hotel A about 10 feet further to align with the existing buildings, and that increases the distance between the two hotel buildings from 80 feet to 90 feet, so to open it up and let it breathe a little bit more. This will give you an overall view, sort of an aerial view of the overall project. And again, if you concentrate on the intercoastal canal there in the middle of the drawing, you can see the Dockmaster Building and next, adjacent to Causeway Park, then the two condominium buildings, and then as you come around to Madeira Way, the two hotel buildings. So in turn, I would like to start by focusing on some of the public improvements and public amenities that are going to be provided as part of this master plan. And here's an image that shows dedicated public access areas that are on private property but will, through the development agreement, be set aside as permanent publicly accessible areas within the district. And there's three main ones worth noting. At the intersection of Gulf Boulevard and 150th Avenue, the triangular crosshatched area to the south of Hotel B will be a public park. It's approximately one-half acre in size. The second one is from Causeway Park down to Madeira Way. We're creating a 12-foot-wide pedestrian and bicycle trail. This is one of the goals in the special area plan is to connect and create strong pedestrian and bicycle connections within the district itself, but also to the public spaces and the parks that already exist. So we're bringing a public sidewalk on private property across the entire front of the property. Over years, as 150th Avenue has been widened, basically, it now extends, the street itself extends from property line to property line, so there's no room to put a public sidewalk on the public property anymore. So we're dedicating part of our property for that use. And then also, on the waterside, we're creating an eight-foot-wide walkway along the Marina slips that will be open to the public, so that Marina will not be fenced off or gated off. That waterfront will also be available to the public. Backing up a little bit here, like I said, this is the new, our current proposal, and here's the previous proposal. Again, you can see where the Dockmaster Building moved from here where it's between the two condominiums, and now it's moved further down towards Causeway Park. The other thing I'll point out is the two condominium buildings were previously 90, had a total of 90 condominiums, 45 in each building. Under our current scheme, these are now 80 condominium units, and whereas they were eight-story buildings, six units, six levels of condominium units over two levels of parking, they are now six-story buildings with four levels of condominiums over two levels of parking. Condo A on your right has 36 condominium units, and Condo B on your left has 44 units for a total of 80. Again, some of those differences between the size of the two buildings is dealing with the change in the zoning district and, again, the allowable densities under each district. And whereas previously, like I said, we've also, well, whereas, I already mentioned that we've reduced the number of units on these two buildings from 90 units to 80 units, we've also reduced the average size a little bit from about 1,800 square feet to 1,600 square feet. So collectively, those two changes allowed us to eliminate two floors from the building and reduce, substantially reduce their height. Also, by pulling the buildings, Condo A further to the west, we've better preserve the view corridor for the Boca Vista, existing Boca Vista condominium building and the Madeira Cove building as well. I'll have some close-up images in just a couple minutes, but I'll go ahead and point out to the two hotel buildings as well. If you look at those, both of those are now eight stories in height, whereas previously they were 11 stories in height. So each of those buildings have been reduced by three stories, as you can see in this overall image, and I'll zoom in on those a little bit and give you a little bit more detail on those. Here's a view coming over the Tom Stewart Causeway and looking down 150th Avenue towards the Gulf of Mexico. And one of the, and you're seeing on your right, the bicycle and pedestrian trail I previously mentioned that's 12-foot wide. And one of our original goals, which is still very important to us, is to create a real strong sense of arrival and entryway into the community. So this boulevard effect with the palm trees, the landscaping, and the bicycle and pedestrian trail. And I think this also represents the point that I made a little bit earlier about how when you first come over the bridge, that having the lower-scale building, the Marina building there as the first building, it's a little bit softer entry into the community. That, that's the only building that's actually enlarged a little bit. That building was enlarged from 5,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. We wanted to beef up the retail component of that a little bit. Otherwise, it's the same number of boat slips, 42 boat slips. And we've actually, we're able to increase the parking by about six parking spaces for the Marina with this scheme. Here's the previous, and this one, I'll just point out that the condominium building here is eight stories, and then here it's six stories. And so again, it's about a 25% reduction in the height of the building. And this just is a little bit of a close-up of the aerial where you can see the Dockmaster Building in both condominium buildings. And then again, this one really points out the difference in scale of the two buildings. This is further down on 150th Avenue and a little bit closer up view of the two hotel buildings. So Hotel A was previously 11 stories. It had retail, the hotel lobby, and some parking on the first floor. It had two levels of parking above that, and then there was originally proposed to be 180 hotel rooms on eight floors above the parking, so that was a total of 11 floors. What we have now is retail and lobby and some parking again on the first floor. The second and third floor are still parking, but now we've reduced the hotel from 180 rooms to 148 rooms, which has allowed us to reduce the height of the building from 11 floors to eight stories. I'll compare it to Ocean Sands, the white and blue condominiums in the background. Those are 12-story buildings, and so whereas previously our buildings were very close to the same height as that, as those two buildings, we're now substantially lower in height. It doesn't quite look like that because our buildings are in front of theirs, so the perspective perhaps doesn't emphasize that, again, that these are eight-story buildings compared to the 12-story buildings in the background. So the final point being that Hotel A has decreased from 180 rooms to 148 rooms and from 11 stories to eight stories. Hotel B was previously also 11 stories. It had, the first floor is almost all retail and restaurant space with the hotel lobby as well, the parking garage entry, then there was three levels of parking. The fifth floor was the hotel amenities and large deck, and then there were six stories of hotel rooms above that, so it also was an 11-story building. In the revised scheme, we've reduced the number of hotel rooms from 250 rooms to 168 rooms, so about a one-third reduction in the number of hotel rooms. We have added back 10 condominium units on the top floor of this building. So the 10 condominium units that were removed from condominium A essentially were relocated to this building. But because of the reduced size of the building and the fewer hotel rooms, we were able to eliminate one floor of parking. So now the building has, first floor again is retail, restaurant space, the same amount as before. We think it's really important to create a real town center environment here and have enough of a destination for both the restaurants and the retail space to really activate this core block within the city. Above that are two floors of parking. The amenity deck is again above that, and then there's three floors of hotel rooms, and then the one floor of condominium units. Overall, the goals still remain in terms of the public space between the two buildings, the same as before. We want to create, we really want to see Madeira Way become a pedestrian-first, very walkable, very pleasant kind of street that has wide sidewalks, continuous retail and restaurant space, and is really a place where the, sort of the pedestrian takes first, comes first as opposed to some of our other streets where, such as Gulf Boulevard and 150th Avenue, where obviously the automobile is probably the more important than pedestrian in terms of, at least in terms of the psychological character of the streets. So we've really worked really hard to design these street, this street, this two-block-long street to, with parallel parking and diagonal parking, with 15-foot-wide sidewalks, with landscaping, and with the scale of the buildings and the scale of the retail space and restaurant space to create a pedestrian-first environment. And so previously, again, you can see the two hotels were 11 stories, and now they're eight stories. And again, here's the new view of Hotel B from the intersection of Gulf Boulevard and 150th Avenue. We still want to create, at this point, the real sense of center for the town and the community, so that's where the public park is, but you can see the eight-story building. Notice that, again, compare this one to the image I'm just about to show you, where there's just two levels of parking here, and then five levels above. Here, there's three levels of parking, and then seven levels above that. So not only has the overall height of the building been reduced quite a bit, I also think bringing down that parking, that one level creates a more pleasant proportion to the overall building. And this image, again, is, this is if you were on an upper level of Ocean Sands across the street looking down onto the public plaza. This really hasn't changed from the initial concepts, and that has been maintained. Although the size of the overall project's been reduced quite a bit, we really have not reduced in any effect any of the public spaces and proposed public spaces or proposed public amenities. We think those are key, not only to the community, but also to the success of this project itself, to be honest. So those are very important to us, and we hope they're important to you as well. And just now that we've gone through all of the different parts of the project, just coming back to the overall view again, and then back to the master plan, and with that, in my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, before you sit down.
Yes, sir.
This is the opportunity now for the board to ask questions of this witness. Do you have any questions of him before he sits down? If not, they can move on to their next person. No questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Parking that's on Madeira Way.
Yes.
Right now, there's currently parking that's free. Is any of that parking going to still be free?
Madeira Way is a public street. You own it, and you control the management of that parking. So my understanding, there's not been any discussion about changing that, but ultimately, that's not our decision or our call. We're proposing a layout, and we're going to be responsible for paying for the lion's share of that in addition to some, through impact fees and other expenses. But I don't know of any discussion of changing the management of that parking to make it a paid parking.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, when you showed us the picture, can we go back to the end where you had the public area?
That one?
Yeah. That is all public, then, for everybody to enjoy, correct?
Correct.
It's not going along with the hotels or anything?
The, and I'm maybe not the best person to go into all of the details of this, but in terms of the legal construct, but the concept is that that property will remain privately owned, but it will be a revocable public easement, which means that that entire triangular property will be fully open to the public, just like Rock Park is, or Causeway Park, or Archibald Beach. Those will be effectively, it will be effectively a public park. It'll just happen to be on private property. And the initial improvements will be paid for by the developer.
And basically, that drawing kind of envisions how the developer would like to have that with, you don't know yet, with water feature.
Yeah.
We're not into that, but something very...
We wanted a very strong tropical feel that talked about our climate and our environment. We wanted something fun and playful. We wanted to have outdoor dining and seating that supports the restaurants. We wanted to have some place for kids to run around a little bit, but in a protected environment.
Sure.
The exact layout and the exact final design of that is subject to change, but those were the, those were the main, and you can still see in the public, the bicycle and pedestrian walk around the perimeter. So those were the main goals in establishing that design, but that's not a final design, necessarily, no.
Thank you.
I have another question. So who maintains that triangular space and the landscape around there?
Scott, you want to, or Kate?
Thank you. With regard to that park on the triangular piece, it will be owned by the developer. It will be maintained by the city, and that was at the request of the city. And then there will be, as Tim mentioned, there will be a recorded easement so that this will always be open and available to the public. Those easements will apply to all the other public access areas that Tim described, with the exception of this location, all the other public access areas will be maintained by my client.
My understanding of those discussions were that the city wanted to ensure that the quality level of the maintenance met the high standards that are currently implemented at all of the other public parks in Madeira Beach, and that if this project is built in accordance with the development agreement, our proposal, that the tax base of this project would itself support that maintenance, but through, but through the general city revenues.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Introduce Mr. Pergulisi.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening. My name is Robert Pergulisi. I'm a principal with Gulf Coast Consulting, 13825 Icot Boulevard, Suite 605. I'm an AICP certified planner and a PTP professional transportation planner with 28 years of experience here in Tampa Bay, mostly doing traffic studies for developments such as this. We conducted the traffic study in February of 2016 with all new counts in 2016 February. They were adjusted to peak season conditions, and I know some of you have heard this before, but for the benefit of those who weren't here, they were adjusted to peak season conditions as is standard engineering practice. That report and the findings were approved in June along with the development agreement that was approved in June by the Board of Commissioners. We conducted a revised traffic study in November to reflect the reductions to the project intensity that Mr. Carnes implemented. We added in expected traffic from Mr. Halton's project, just like we did in the prior study, which that is also undergoing further reductions, which I believe will come before you in a few months. The Madeira Beach Town Center project, we analyzed the traffic generation of it using Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is the standard traffic engineering practice. The revised project would result in 2,958 daily vehicle trips, of which 224 would occur during the PM peak hour. during the PMP hour. That represents a 24% reduction in the traffic that was analyzed in the approved report from June. That was approved in June, done in February. Want to talk about modifications. Modifications to the traffic signal at 150th Avenue and Madeira Way are proposed. Emphasis on modifications, because I know it's been banted about...
I interrupted you for a second, so everybody can keep up with us. Can you compare that traffic, you said 250 during peak hours?
Twenty-four, sir.
Twenty-four. What was that in the previous setup? Do you remember?
I think it was...
I can't remember either.
I think it was like 290 or somewhere, or almost 300, somewhere, 24% higher.
Seventy cars during peak season, okay.
I do want to make a deliberate point about that we're proposing modifications to the traffic signal at 150th Avenue and Madeira Way, not outright full removal. And I know that has been talked about, but then people were concerned about pedestrian crossings, because that's the place where you can safely cross 150th Avenue. What we are proposing to remove or eliminate is the left turns from Madeira Way onto 150th Avenue to head back towards the mainland, and the crazy little left-hand turn from 150th Avenue, almost 120 degrees, onto Madeira Way. That is all that is proposed to be removed, that part of the traffic light. Traffic signals would be green for 150th Avenue, but we will be maintaining a pedestrian crossing across 150th Avenue that would be activated by a pedestrian to cross from north side to south side. The exact location of that pedestrian crossing, we will work out the final details with the Florida Department of Transportation, since it's their road, to effectuate the most safe crossing location. So upon activation by a pedestrian that seeks to cross, all traffic on 150th Avenue would get a red light. In addition, we propose to make modifications to the medians along 150th Avenue to lengthen the left turn lanes, or to add left turn lanes where none presently exist. Those are both safety and capacity improvements on 150th Avenue. In addition, I think Tim may have alluded to it, the removal of several driveways on the north side of 150th Avenue, and consolidation into two locations, one that aligns with the median opening opposite Madeira Cove, and the other that aligns with the median opening opposite Boca Vista. I think we're going from eight driveways down to two. Those in themselves increase safety, because it reduces your conflict points. In regard to levels of service, 150, this is really no different than what I had in my prior study, except for the volumes are a little bit lower. The 150th Avenue would still operate at level of service C. The city's adopted level of service standard is level of service D, so C is within that. And the expected volume with both projects, Mr. Holton's and Mr. Carnes' project, would be 2,793 vehicles per hour during the PMP hour, as I said, with both projects. And Gulf Boulevard would still operate at level of service D, although, albeit with a little bit lower volume than what we had previously analyzed, because the project traffic is a little bit lower. Finally, these median modifications and signal changes were discussed on numerous occasions with FDOT, and there will be many more discussions with FDOT as, as this project moves forward, particularly into the permitting stage. FDOT permits will be required for any changes to 150th Avenue or Gulf Boulevard, and full design and the traffic study will need to be submitted with permit applications. I'm happy to answer any questions right now, if you have any, or I'll introduce Cindy Tera Pani, who will talk about the planning.
Does anybody have any questions?
So I can turn right from Madeira Way onto Tom Stewart Causeway, like I can now.
Yes.
But I can't turn left on there.
Right.
And I can turn right on Madeira Bay, coming from Tom Stewart, going west onto Madeira Bay.
Yes.
So I still do that, it's just eliminating the left.
Correct. And that was done to respond to the, I guess, goals of the special area plan, to create less cut-through traffic on Madeira Way, and to have a more pedestrian-oriented street on Madeira Way, as Tim had suggested.
What will be the best route for people to get to, like, city center, to keep going down Gulf Boulevard? How, how is that going to be accessed?
Like, if you wanted to get to this area here?
Yes.
If you were coming south on Gulf Boulevard?
Going north.
Going north on Gulf Boulevard?
Yes.
How would one get any, my suggestion would be to continue through the traffic light at 150th Avenue and make the turn onto Madeira Way, which would be a right turn, or continue up to the flashing light to 153rd, which kind of brings you into that way.
Okay, and come down that way.
Yeah, but most likely Madeira Way.
Okay.
Every motorist will do something different.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Move on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Cindy Tera Pani. I'm an urban planner with over thirty-five years of experience, mostly on the southwest coast of Florida, Pinellas County. I'm Vice President of Planning with Florida Design Consultants, and I believe you have my resume for being qualified as an expert witness in planning. Along with the rest of the team, we represent Madeira Beach Town Center LLC, who is the... Excuse me?
Speaking to the microphone, Cindy, if you can. Get closer.
I'm trying not to hit the computer here. Just close it, Tim. Thank you. Along with the rest of the team, I represent the applicant today for the rezoning and the development agreement as being revised. The site at 6.7 acres, as you've heard, is still composed of two hotels, two condominiums, a marina with forty-two slips, and retail and restaurant, but the intensity of that development has declined significantly, both in intensity and amount, as well as the, the height of those buildings. All of the major buildings, with the exception of the marina, have been reduced in height. The other, and you'll see on the, the, kind of the cheat sheet, I guess, that I'm referring to, the one page, this is a comparison of the approved plan that was approved in June of this year to the proposed site plan. The proposed that's before you hear tonight is shown in red, the column's in red. As you can see, the number of residential units remains the same, although ten units are now on top of Hotel B, whereas before they were all within condos A and B. The number of hotel rooms has reduced, been reduced significantly from 430 to 316 rooms. Retail remains the same, and the marina is slightly larger. The number of slips remains the same. The real difference you can see in the number of floors and the height in, in feet. Every single building, as I said before, with the exception of the marina, was reduced in height, some of them pretty significantly, 21 feet for Hotel B, which is a pretty significant reduction, and 25 feet for Hotel A. Just for your information, the parcel number and parcel size are shown. The parcel numbers did change in this scenario, but the site remains at 6.7 acres, more or less 6.7 acres. What I'd like to do is go through, there are five criteria in your code for your LPA reviewing of PD rezoning. I'd like to talk about each one of those criteria and just discuss how the project complies. First of all, the first criteria is consistency with the, with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan category for this site is PRMU, Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use on the Future Land Use Map. Every PRMU has to also be associated with the special area plan, and this special area plan is entitled, as you've heard before, the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. It was approved in 2009. There were some amendments in 2014, and I'll talk about them in a little more detail in a moment, but suffice it to say that we are not relying on the 2014 amendments with regard to the increased density that you saw in the previous plan. So this plan complies with the 2009 special area plan with regard to density and intensity, and I'll give you the specifics on that in just a moment. The site is located, and Mr. Clemens made reference to it, it's located within two character districts within the special area plan. The largest part of the site is the commercial core, which is the, the triangle at, at Madeira Way and that section in there that parcels, excuse me, Hotels A and B are located on, and also condo B. It's 5.2 acres total. That is the more intense site within the special area plan. It allows up to a 1.2 floor area ratio, 15 units an acre for residential, and 60 units an acre for temporary lodging, or what we would call hotel. The part, in the 2009 plan, within the commercial core, you could have additive density in this, the commercial core district. So that was in the 2009, and we are using that. However, in the Causeway District, which is the smaller portion of the site, it's the hockey stick, as Tim called it, where condos, portion of B and A and the marina are located. Those do not allow the additive density in the 2009 plan, and we are not using that provision. The Causeway District is only 1.4 acres. It also allows 15 units an acre for residential and 60 units an acre for hotel, and a, but a much lower FAR, .55 floor area ratio. The uses in both character districts are consistent with these two character districts in terms of use, meaning that the uses are allowed, the residential and hotel are clearly allowed in each character district, and the intensity, by that I mean the density in the residential and the density in the condominium, and the intensity or the floor area ratio for the resident, for the commercial portions are consistent with those two character districts. There are three provisions in 2014 that made changes to the special area plan, and again, we're not relying on any of those. I just want to point them out specifically. The first one had to do with allowing, added the additive density to the Causeway Character District. It was previously allowed in the commercial core, the part on Madeira Way, was now added to the commercial, the Causeway section. We're not using that in the Causeway District. Each site has to stand on its own, each use. The other provision that we are not relying on is a density averaging between planned categories between the character districts. That's what Tim was talking about, where you could calculate your maximum development potential and then spread it out all over the 6.7 acres. We're not relying on that either. And the last provision in 2014, the last amendment, was to create a resort facilities high planned category and allow a substantially higher density with regard for hotel units. We're not using that provision either. On page six of my report, it goes through all the math and shows you how in the Causeway District, we are not using any additive density, we are fully complying with the 15 units an acre and the .55 FAR in combination, because we have the residential units there and the marina. In the commercial core, it's a, we are having, of course, we have the hotel, the retail and restaurant, and the residential, that we are showing clearly on this table, too, that is additive within that particular area. On page seven, there's a wide variety of objectives in the special area plan with which the project complies. We're creating a unique sense of place, I think that's very evident in Mr. Clemens' drawings that you saw tonight. We're promoting a wide variety of uses to create an activity center for residents and tourists, so there's something here, not just for people who come to stay in the hotel, but also for people who live in the town to come and enjoy the restaurant and the retail, not to mention the wonderful Triangle Park, and hopefully we'll come up with a better name than Triangle Park. We are setting a standard for urban design so that it contributes to the public realm. Clearly, the improvements that have been proposed by this project, the improvements to Madeira Way, to make that a pedestrian place, the Triangle Park area, the public accessways along the front of Causeway, and on the water side of Causeway, all of those are to encourage people to come out and enjoy those places. We have increased the number of temporary lodging units by 316 in the two hotels, and we've maintained and actually increased the number of residential units in the town center, because commercial follows residential, because clearly the, the retail and the restaurant will, will serve the hotel guests, but you've also got to have folks in the downtime, you know, in the summertime, when we all know is not, is our low time in Florida, and so you've got to have those residents there to patronize those businesses during that time period. The project improves pedestrian and bicycle access. I think it was really clear on the plan that was presented with the two public accessways, again, one along Causeway from Causeway Park all the way to Triangle Park, and then the other along the water side for a public accessway. We've developed parking and access strategies that make a most efficient use of the scarce land. For example, except for the marina, all four of the buildings promote structured parking, which is a much more efficient use of the land. It's more expensive, but it is more efficient, and it has a less negative impact on the land. In summary, the development is consistent with the allowable uses, the allowable density for both hotel and residential, and the intensity for the non-residential or commercial uses. With regard to land use compatibility, that's the second criteria you should look at tonight. Clearly, the residential portion of the project is oriented along Causeway. On the south side of the Causeway, it is a residential, clearly a residential area, and the size of our, and the heights of our buildings at six stories are clearly consistent with buildings across the street on the south side that range between eight, five, and four stories, kind of going in backwards order. So we're at, we're at six, we're right in the, right in that range in terms of that height and intensity. And the commercial area, obviously at Madeira Way and the triangle area, the more intense development is concentrated there, where you already have commercial development, and obviously across the street on the Gulf, on the water side, you have a residential development at 12 stories, and as Mr. Clemens mentioned, we're substantially below that. Third criteria is adequate public facilities, and that's been demonstrated in a couple of ways. First of all, your special area plan has an infrastructure analysis, and it's been referenced in the staff report, and that infrastructure analysis for the entire special area plan confirmed that public facilities are available for potable water, sanitary sewer, transportation, recreation, stormwater management. Additionally, as Mr. Pergulisi mentioned, as a traffic engineer, as a traffic planner, he has done a detailed traffic study to show that this project, with the existing other trips on the road, and with another pending project that is out there that's also in Causeway Boulevard, that 150th or Causeway Boulevard will not be reduced as the, the level of service, or what we call the LOS. So the adopted LOS, level of service, that you, that the city has said, you cannot go below, which is D, like in dog, and it's just like the grades that you can imagine. So since it's going to be C with this project, that is better than the adopted level of service for 150th, and therefore it meets your requirements for public facilities. In summary, all the public facilities are available to the site, and the project is concurrent for those public facilities. The fourth criteria is public interest. Clearly, the special area plan's entire purpose was true, was in the public interest to create a better place and a more interesting place that people would come to and enjoy, and that obviously has financial ramifications in a positive way, hopefully, for the city with, when redevelopment comes. The proposed development is consistent with that special area plan, and it therefore contributes positively, positively to the goals. It should also be noted that the project is subject to a development agreement, so that those improvements that we talked about with regard to the traffic improvements, also the two pedestrian ways, the one on Causeway on the roadside and the one on the water side, are all memorialized in the development agreement and are obligations between the city and the developer, with the developer required to make those improvements. And it's a contract, that's what a development agreement is. So it's not just we're saying it on a site plan that, yeah, we think we're going to do it. It's actually a contract between the developer and the city that obligates the developer to do this. The last criteria today in your LPA review is consistency with the land development regulations. I won't go through all the details, but clearly you have in your package, the site plan that showed through Mr. Clemens' evaluation, that it does meet all of the requirements in terms of setbacks and parking requirements and parking space size, heights, all of those things that are required in your code, stormwater management, all the different issues, issues that are required. The applicant also held two neighborhood meetings, as required by the code. We held those on December 6th of this year. And the project is concurrent for all public facilities as required by the land development regulation. So in summary, I think I've demonstrated that we meet the five criteria for your review tonight. It's quite a lot of information, which I understand that we've thrown a lot of different numbers and data towards you, and I'm happy to answer any questions or anyone else on the team that you might have questions for. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? No? I think we're good.
Thank you. And just to conclude our presentation, I want to confirm for the record that the planning analysis prepared by Ms. Terapani is part of tonight's record, as well as the presentation by Mr. Clemens.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this point, there's a couple of things that have been handed into you, and I just want to go through them. It's appropriate to consider whether they're going to be received into evidence, and, Mr. Chairman, you're going to be the one that does that. It's my recommendation, at this point, to receive the following items into evidence. The first item is the CV, the curriculum vitae of Timothy Clemens with mesh architecture. The second is the curriculum vitae of Mr. Pergolesi. He's the traffic engineer. The third item is the curriculum vitae of Ms. Terapani. The fourth item is the one-page chart titled Comparison of Approved Versus Proposed Site The fifth document is the planning analysis that Mrs. Terapani has presented to you to consider. So if you were to receive those into evidence, you just need to let us know that you're, the board is going to receive them into evidence.
Okay, we've received those into evidence.
Thank you.
And then, just to confirm for the record, that Ms. Terapani, Mr. Clemens, and Mr. Pergolesi were accepted as expert witnesses in their respective areas of expertise?
And that, Mr. Chairman, is also your prerogative, and my advice to you is, is with this, with the curriculum vitae's they provided to you and the testimony that they have given, they, they should be considered experts in their fields.
Accepted. We consider them experts.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next is going to be the city, who's going to make the presentation, and we're sharing a microphone, so we'll just move it a little bit closer.
All right, we've heard a lot of this, so my, my presentation's going to be somewhat brief. I'm going to give you the background on the special area plan. In September of 2009, the Madeira Beach Special Area Plan was approved by the Board of Commissioners. This special area plan was created because the downtown area lacked a cohesive identity and sense of place to attract residents and tourists. Under this plan, the area would be a vibrant place to live, work, and play. The vibrancy would be apparent to the motorists entering the city from the mainland along the Causeway, as well as to the residents and tourists who use the town center as a gathering place to eat, shop, and make use of the civic services in the area. The special area plan contains tools and strategies that will help guide redevelopment in those areas, that are important not only for the city, but for Pinellas County as well. It includes an analysis of its existing conditions, a review of issues and objectives for the town center, recommends land uses and design guidelines to inform future development, and provides a list of recommended actions for implementation. In 2007, the city amended the comprehensive plan to include the planned redevelopment mixed-use land use category, with the intention for use in this town center. In order to use this designation, a special area plan needed to be included. This special area plan was written to serve the role and provide support for the town center as a planned redevelopment mixed-use on the future land use map in the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan. This special area plan included five districts, Causeway, Commercial Core, Beachfront, Pinellas, and Transition, that carry out the objectives of the special area plan. The proposed PD is located in the Causeway and Commercial Core districts. These two districts require the following criteria. First story, commercial activity is to be required. Interparcial access is required for properties north of Madeira Way. Access should be off of a street other than Gulf Boulevard, where possible. Properties qualify for shared parking provisions. All buildings shall be a minimum of two stories. Require easement for Bayfront Walk on Boca Seaga Bay. No parking is required for the triangle of properties bounded by Madeira Way, Gulf Boulevard, and 150th Avenue. Require pedestrian easement from First Street East to Municipal Drive for the triangle of properties in the parking waiver area bounded by Madeira Way, Gulf Boulevard, and 150th Avenue. Consider a pedestrian easement across proposed redevelopment of the Carter property, which is over near Windixee in the special area plan, it refers to it as Carter, residential, oh, I'm sorry, Carter property, to provide access between the parking garage and the civic building area. Residential and/or temporary lodging units must be located on an upper floor. Interparcial access is required for all properties, and properties qualify for shared parking provisions. Additional standards for the special area plan in the Commercial Core and Causeway districts address the building setbacks, outdoor dining and display, parking lot location and size, parking lot landscaping, off-street service, and loading areas and architectural guidelines. You, as the local planning agency, also known as the Planning Commission, are required by Section 110-391 of the Land Development Regulations to review the rezoning application, and you must determine if they follow the zoning standards. And Ms. Terapani has already gone through each of the questions that you need to answer, but I'm going to do an analysis through the staff. The first one was consistency with the comprehensive plan. The subject parcels are located in the planned redevelopment mixed-use future land use category, which is further implemented through the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. The future land use district establishes a maximum density of 15 residential units per acre and 60 temporary lodging units per acre, a maximum floor area ratio of .55, an impervious surface of .70 for the Causeway District, and floor area ratio of 1.2, an impervious surface ratio of .85 for the Commercial Core District. The proposed project of 6.69 acres meets the requirements as set forth in the Town Center Special Area Plan. Number two, land use compatibility. The project proposes mixed-use development on parcels that are currently retail and restaurant. However, the site is surrounded by a variety of uses, including other commercial businesses, multifamily residential developments, that are compatible with this mixed-use project. Although the proposed concept plan will permit development that is taller than the existing uses on the property, the project is not directly adjacent to residential developments that are lower in height. Across the street, Gulf Boulevard from the project is an existing 11-story multifamily residential development. Number three, adequate public facilities. The applicants have coordinated the conceptual development plans with Pinellas County Engineering, the Florida Department of Transportation, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The applicants have submitted a traffic study for the development to FDOT and the city, demonstrating there will be no change in the level of service with the proposed development. The applicants have met with FDOT to discuss the future improvements required by the department, and the improvements are shown on the conceptual drawings for the development. Also, the applicants have had a pre-application meeting with SWFMA to determine the onsite stormwater management facility permitting requirements. Certificates of concurrency and outside agency permitting will need to be obtained prior to any development taking place on the site. Public interest. The proposed development of hotels, condos, retail, and restaurants will enhance, enhance the tourist industry for Madeira Beach and its local businesses. The proposed development has been determined to be consistent with the type of development that is specifically provided for in the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. The development will help provide needed redevelopment to the town center area. Number five, consistency with land development regulations. The PD, Plan Development District, is intended to accommodate integrated and well-designed developments in accordance with approved development plans. The district is intended to offer flexibility of design and encourage imaginative, functional, high-quality land planning development for those uses consistent with the applicable future land use plan category, and which are compatible with adjacent nearby lands and activities. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning to plan development. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the developers' agreement. Oh, first item, in ordinance 2017-01 that you have in front of you, there is an error. It is 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth whereas, and it says the zoning designation of PD, Plan Development District, is compatible to resort facilities medium, that should be, is compatible to the planned redevelopment mixed-use. Just want to let you know that ahead of time. And for the developers' agreement, let me give you a little bit of background on that. An application to rezone 6.69 acres located on the northwest side of 150th Avenue, Tomster Causeway, from Gulf Boulevard to the city's Causeway Park, from Plan Development District to Plan Development District, is being considered by the local planning agency, also known as Planning Commission. This request is for the approval of the development agreement, which is required to implement the Plan Development District. The PD, the Plan Development District does not have a specific list of uses permitted, but may, may contain a mixture of temporary lodging, residential, commercial, recreation, and other uses as permitted by the future land use map designation on the site. So what that means is, if you were going to the Land Development Regulations under Plan Development, it does not say what is permitted in the use category. It has to be in the developers' agreement, and so that's what the city and the developer discuss and agree upon. So the purpose of the development agreement is to establish the development rights and conditions for the project, and establish the submitted concept plan as a basis for reviewing future development proposals on the site. Conditions contained in the agreement will help ensure that the development will not adversely affect the city of Madeira Beach and the public. The proposed development agreement under consideration is between the city of Madeira Beach and the property owners of the proposed development. The agreement establishes the rights and responsibilities of the parties to the agreement. And we've already gone through those agreements, which was the 15 years, it would need to be tied to a specific concept plan, and includes requirement for future site plan approval of each phase, details of specific off-site improvements that will need to be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the project, and specifies that permitting and design costs for the required off-site improvements will be paid by the developer. And you've also received today an addendum to the staff report, and I just briefly want to go over this, because we have had some questions from the public regarding the infrastructure. And in 2014, an addendum was added to the Town Center Special Area Plan. This addendum was, was an infrastructure analysis prepared to give a hypothetical maximum development potential under the then, oh wait, under the current future land use plan categories within the planned redevelopment mixed-use plan category. The impacts on and capacity of the city's infrastructure, including water, wastewater, transportation, recreation, stormwater management, and the considerations related to the coastal high-hazard area, were evaluated. This evaluation took all five of the zoning districts into consideration and calculated the possible highest density per the resort facilities high land use, subject to rezoning to PD. Plan development for residential, temporary lodging, and commercial use. The applicant has not requested the highest use available in the resort facilities high land use, but has used the development standards indicated for each zoning district as shown in the original special area plan approved in 2009. So in 2009, you've got the table of development standards, and the Causeway and the Commercial Core are the ones that the applicant is located. In the resort facility high, the maximum use is permitted in each zoning district with an approved PD, Plan Development, zoning district are shown below. As indicated in the two tables, the applicant has chosen the 15 units per acre for the residential units and 60 units per acre for temporary lodging. The applicant has also chosen the lower FAR and ISR that are permitted under ordinance 2014-07. The proposed development does not exceed the capacity of the city's infrastructure based on the assessment of maximum development potential, and there is a definitive process in place to assure that they cannot and will not be allowed to do so. And then I've attached that infrastructure analysis to your packet, and that's also found online. So the city of Madeira Beach, in accordance with the provisions of Florida statutes, is to encourage a stronger commitment to the comprehensive and capital facility planning, ensure compliance with special procedures and projects, ensure the provisions of adequate public facilities for development, encourage the efficient use of resources, and reduce the cost of development. The proposed project shall comply with the approved comprehensive plan, Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, and the Land Development Regulations. Staff has reviewed the draft development agreement for compliance, and based on this review, staff recommends that the planning agency recommend approval of the draft development agreement to the Board of Commissioners. And this would be scheduled for a final Board of Commissioner reading on February 14th, 2017. And the ordinance 2017-01 for rezoning, staff also recommends approval, and a recommendation for approval would schedule this one. It needs to go to two Board of Commissioner meetings. The first reading would be January 10th, 2017, and contingent on that first reading approval, the second and final will be at the same time as the developers' agreement on February 14th, 2017. And that's staff's report. And I'd like to put this under evidence.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have two staff reports that you've received, along with the application. City staff is asking that the staff reports be received into evidence, similar to the other documents that the applicant has tendered.
We will receive those in his evidence.
And, does the board have any questions of city staff?
Any questions? I think we're good.
Okay, so the next thing that we need to do is, is to bring the affected parties forward, and we're going to do them one at a time. The first one, and remember, the last two, we're going to have some discussion on, Mr. Chairman, but the first three...
Right.
...there has been no objection to. So the first one would be John Lipa, and it's time for him to make his presentation.
Good evening.
Could I just ask for some technical assistance with this laptop, so he knows how to operate it?
Yeah, Nick, we're going to need your help again.
While that's coming on, let me shorten it up, and I'll just tell you some preliminary stuff.
You need to speak right into the microphone, we can't hear you.
The, my name is John Lipa. I live on 399 150th Avenue, here in Madeira Beach. I'm a resident of city of Madeira Beach, and I've spoken to you before from this podium. I am not an expert traffic consultant, nor an expert planning consultant, a lawyer or developer. I am a retired senior-level business executive with 31 years of experience with Fortune 100 companies, negotiating labor agreements and reading and assessing business plans for companies such as General Electric, Lackey &amp; Martin, and General Dynamics. In addition, I've had a dozen years of experience, or 10 years of experience, chairing, as you do, Mr. Chairman, the City of North Adams, Massachusetts redevelopment commission, so I share your pain. In addition, I chaired for eight years the Massachusetts Workforce Board Association, and I got a dozen years of living on real-life practical experience trying to negotiate 150th Avenue, trying to get out of my house or back into my house. I am speaking not only for myself as vice president of the Madeira Cove Condominium Association, but I'm also speaking for others who live on the south side of 150th Avenue. I'm also aware that in this climate, litigious climate we're in, in this quasi-judicial process, parties may assert their right to challenge some of what, or all of what I say, not because it doesn't make sense, not because it isn't factual, but because some will say, "It's just my opinion." I realize that in this process, opinions can be challenged unless the testifier meets certain legal thresholds for technical competence. I recognize, I'll tell you right now, I don't have that technical competence necessary, so what I'm telling you is my opinion. And all that said, I think it's important for what I say to you tonight, because I want to tell you what I know... to tell you what I know, and what I feel, and what I believe, and the hope that it helps you and the citizens of Madera Beach better understand this plan, and also an ask that I will put before you at the end of my talk. As Michelle Orton knows, I've spent considerable time trying to understand to the best of my ability, the whole Madera Beach comprehensive plan. Its terminology, which is, if you're not working with it, it's kind of hard to understand, and all the amendments. And I've been able to boil down 15 years of legalese into one slide with five points. I want to share it with you, and hope it helps you, and hope it helps everybody out there and better understand what's going on. So there's the, the plan, and you could, you can see, this all started back in 2001. And then there was a whole series of enabling actions taken in 2005, 2007, 2009, and 2014, which got us all here and back in the spring, and here again tonight. I won't bore you with all the details. I've given the staff a copy of my talking points and also these charts that you'll see, so you can review them at your leisure. But there was a sequence of actions taken to bring a vision that was articulated by the city fathers back in 2001 through, so that each, the 2001 plan could be properly enacted and development could be occurred by enticing developers to come forward. And you can see, nothing really happened until 2014, when the resorts facility high was approved, and then developers came forward. And then we know what, now we're here because of some outgrowth of that discussion. Also, this, these steps were also in compliance with the comprehensive plan, which said every five years, you got to look at it and tweak it to make sure it's actionable. 2005, 2009, 2014 are all five-year increments from, and also 2001. So there was a plan, there was a strategy, and it was followed. And here we are. So what you heard earlier this year were plans by Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton to substantially develop two of the five property, districts in the special area plan, the Commercial Core and the Causeway District. We all know these proposals were robust, and you found them to be consistent with the plan as amended in 2014. A number of citizens took exception, not only to the robustness of the plan, but the way this whole quasi judicial process caught a lot of people off guard and didn't know quite how to act through it. And they also, some people got excited about personalities, and our two-mile-long, smile-wide city got fractured. So I'm hoping by having an objective discussion of things, we can get this smile back on our city and move forward. Much has transpired in the months since I last stood in front of you. The developers, Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton, being wise business people, spent a lot of time listening and evaluating. I know because I spent a lot of time with them, especially Mr. Carnes. They told me they were willing to modify their projects and build something that would be responsive to the concerns that they heard from the citizens, which would also work for them as developers. On October 10th, Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton invited Larry Roloff's and myself to meet. The developers wanted to share with us their thoughts on a redesign. We said what we saw and heard appeared promising, but they needed to show how their scaled plans mapped up against the 2009 SAP PD. Five weeks later, we again met, and the plans you were shown this evening were substantial, were the plans that we were shown back then. Mr. Holton is still working on his. And here is my overview of what Mr. Carnes presented to us back then, and which I presented to the owners at Madera Cove. They did a lot of change. They dropped, they lowered, they cut, they reallocated, they shifted, to respond to people's concerns. And 27%, 20, you know, is a, is a big chunk to take out of any project if you're trying to make a buck. And I got to commend him. He did it. And the one about altering the design of Plan Hotel B and the number of floors to avoid the canyon look, that was in response to my wife going up to Mr. Carnes on March 6th at his public meeting and saying, it looks like a canyon. He listened, and he responded. So I thank him, and my wife thanks him. There's an example of what the before and the after. And, you know, if it meets the plan, if it meets SAP 2009, it's, it may be taller than a lot of, some people wouldn't like, but it's better than what it was proposed. And there's that triangle park. You can either like that, or you can love this. And we all think this needs, I at least, I think this area here is presently constructed, is a little loving here, and Mr. Carnes is showing he's got a vision for that area to improve it. Larry and I still pushed Mr. Carnes to say, show us how you comply with the 2009. So we developed two charts. Here's one of them for Madera Way, showing what's allowed under the PD and what they And here's the one for 150th Avenue. In each case, it looks to me like they either met or were below it. I was a member of the J.C.'s when I was a youth, and I became state vice president and was honored by the United States J.C.'s as one of the top five state vice presidents in the country. So it meant a lot to me, but one line of the J.C. creed always stuck with me. Government should be of laws rather than men. Well, you're the government, and you got to make that decision, did they comply? It's not what my opinion is, it's what you guys think this evening. Part of the thing, the other part I really want to talk to you about is what I started to talk about the last go around, was traffic. It's a big issue for us on 150th Avenue. And I'm talking about Boca Vista, Snug Harbor, Madera Cove. If you remember, when I came to you last, to try to get a traffic light at the intersection of the new condo development and 399 150th, all three condos agreed to give up private property rights so Snug Harbor could go through Boca Vista, and Snug Harbor and Boca Vista could go through Madera Cove to get onto our driveway to get to 150th, so there would be a traffic light, there would be enough activity. Mr. Carnes, this part here is in your proposal that Mr. Carnes presented tonight, I believe it's on page 10. It's called paragraph 9.11. Mr. Carnes lovingly refers to it as the Larry and John amendment, because we pushed hard for it. I've had many discussions about Mr. Carnes, about traffic control devices, and there are really three legs that we're trying to accomplish. One is to make it safe on 150. Make, we know there's going to be more cars, you know, that's a given if you're going to develop this thing. So how do you move the traffic safely and quickly as you can? So traffic light, no turn red on 150th and Gulf Boulevard, so that people can cross the intersection there safely, work with the Coast Guard to change the bridge opening timing. And the third, last one, and most importantly, is the commitment to seek approval from FDOT to place a traffic light at the new intersection. Now, we know, I met with the regional director of the FDOT along with Shane and Mr. Carnes, and I know the director would prefer no traffic light between Dumay and 150th. Because they're, they see that road just as an east-west traffic and flow corridor, and they don't care much about the north-south. But we have hope, because we know the city would prefer the town center to be pedestrian-friendly. We know that FDOT wants to move traffic along 150th. And the people who live on, in the condos on the south side want to be able to get out safely and get home safely. So it's with those three objectives in mind that Mr. Carnes developed the paragraphs, the three legs in paragraph nine, nine dot one, one. So on behalf of myself and the citizens and residents on the south side of 150th Avenue, Mr. Holton and Mr. Carnes, I should add that 21 of our owners at Madera Cove attended the public information meeting that Mr. Carnes had the other day. Every one of them liked the new design, provided this thing you're looking at right now happens. We, we still have to be able to get in and out of our homes. So what we need, if you can find your way, if you approve this plan, can you also find a way to endorse paragraph 9.11, so we have it in our quiver to go to FDOT and say, there is unanimity of support for these three initiatives to, for public safety, traffic and pedestrian safety on 150. We also like to ask all citizens of Madera Beach to likewise join the support chorus. And we need a support chorus, because we have to convince FDOT. They control that road. By letting Senator Jeff Brandy's representative Darrell Ruson and State Representative Kathleen Peters know that you're in favor of these traffic initiatives. That's all I have to say. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I think we're good. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next is Larry Roloff's.
I live at 399 150th Avenue. I'm not a professional speaker, so bear with me. Okay, like John, I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about me. Can you hear me okay? I have a college degrees in electrical engineering, physics, and a master's degree in business management. I worked for my country at the National Security Agency for 35 years, and another 10 years at an engineering consulting firm. I also own 33% of a small electrical company. I managed, while at NSA, research and development and production of secure military communications equipment totaling well over $1 billion and deployed worldwide. I received many awards for my work, one being a Presidential Unit Citation for my work in Desert Storm Iraq. It was presented to me by General Colin Powell, Chairman of Joint Chiefs of Staff at that time. I've also been the president of Madera Cove Condominiums for the past 12 years. As John stated in his talk, I realize in this quasi judicial process, opinions can be challenged unless the testifier meets certain legal thresholds for technical competence. I recognize that I do not have the technical competence necessary. So I am telling you that my opinion I offer here is my own personal opinion, and that of many of the owners of Madera Cove Condominiums, and therefore I may be challenged. I come before you today to further enhance and support John's testimony regarding the efforts we have already taken that we hope will lead to agreements between all affected parties. My particular role has been to generate and distribute numerous emails and sit at the head of meetings to the owners of Madera Cove. I've also met with the Holton and Carnes teams on numerous occasions, as John already testified, to understand their points of view. I've also met with the presidents of Boca Vista and Snug Harbor to understand their concerns. At a recent Board of Director meetings at Madera Cove, we had an overflowing crowd of owners jamming our clubhouse because of a single agenda item, holiday aisles and town center development projects. Our normal meetings last less than an hour. However, this meeting went on for over two hours. The main purpose was to discuss the owners' concerns regarding traffic and pedestrian safety. The overwhelming concern of the residents was the safety of entering and exiting 150th Avenue. They repeated over and over again of their fear of getting in and out of our driveway without getting into an accident, and how long it will take to get in and out with the increases in traffic. I will show you a situation a person may face attempting to exit Madera Cove onto 150th Avenue, if I can figure this thing out. All right, if you turn and look at the picture, what I'm going to concentrate on is the intersection between condo B and condo A, and down on the lower part, that is the Madera Cove entrance and exit onto 150th Avenue. Now, this is my drawing. So put yourself in the vehicle titled Madera Cove Vehicle. There's over 120 owners coming out of this driveway along with delivery trucks, contractors every day. So here's what they face. First of all, number eight, they got to watch for children going up and down the sidewalk on their bicycles or walking to school. Then, once that's clear in their mind, they see the westbound traffic, I'm sorry, eastbound traffic on 150th Avenue titled one and two, two lanes heading eastbound. Then they have to pay attention to the westbound cars, three and four, heading toward Gulf Boulevard. Now, there's been a new left-turn lane proposed, number five, which will be turning into the condominium projects A and B at the top. Also, there already exists a left-turn lane going westbound titled number six. Now you'll have the new situation titled number seven, exiting condos A and B. And then, of course, number nine is the 12-foot wide sidewalk with pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Now, can you imagine putting yourself in that vehicle, trying to get out of this intersection without a traffic signal? I would say it's almost nearly impossible. So this is where we're concentrating on tonight. So if I can continue, if the traffic signal is removed at Madera Way, it is critical that one be installed at 399 150th Avenue on that drawing. This traffic signal would prevent the scenarios I described in the picture I presented. It also will provide a break in traffic. This is really important for all the condominiums on 150th Avenue. There has to be a break in traffic. We're not going to get out. All the communities on the south side, as John mentioned, Madera Cove, Boca Vista, Snug Harbor, and the two new Holton condo buildings, all on the south side, plus the two new condominium buildings on the north side, will also have, there will be also a hotel at the Holton project. So we're talking about over 500 residents trying to get out onto 150th Avenue. It is critical that all parties involved understand the impact that is coming, and what can be done to survive our ingress and egress of the condo communities and hotels. what can be done to survive our ingress and egress of the condo communities and hotels on both sides of 150th Avenue. If we don't get a traffic signal at 399 150th Avenue, then traffic accidents and pedestrian deaths will be a certainty. Why should FDOT wait for those events to happen in order to meet their warrant requirements for a traffic signal when they can do it from the start? We all need, we need all parties from the City Hall to the two developers and all the residents along 150th Avenue to work as one voice to FDOT. I would ask the Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the final development agreement include a traffic signal at 399 150th Avenue. In meeting with the two developers, I must say, they have been most accommodating in their attempts to satisfy opposing citizens of Madera Beach. They have redesigned their project significantly, and I and many of our owners at Madera Cove are very happy with those design changes, and believe it will enhance our city of Madera Beach if we can solve the traffic concerns. In closing, it would be my hope that all of the affected residents along 150th Avenue and others throughout our city work together as a team to achieve a safe thoroughfare along 150th Avenue. Rather than fighting the developments, we need to work as a team to get the best possible outcome. Wouldn't it be something if people entering our city over Tom Stewart Causeway Bridge would see a beautiful entrance through our city that was lined with palm trees on both sides, buried utility lines, wide sidewalks to safely accommodate pedestrians, whether they are walking or on bicycles? It could become the most beautiful entrance of all the barrier islands. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is William Gay.
My name is Bill Gay. I live at 423 150th Avenue in the Snug Harbor Condominiums. I kind of wish, I'm glad you left this up here, Larry, because this could be our situation, but a little different. I have about 30-plus years consulting with local government, mostly in public safety operations, that's police, fire, and emergency medical. I've been published by the International City Management Association, the National Institute of Justice, Department of Justice, and also by the National League of Cities. So I have a long history of working with cities across the country and counties, up and down the east coast, off to the west coast, on projects like you're dealing with here. I'm not an expert in development, but I, you know, have an ability to take a look at issues and try to understand them and critique them in some ways. What I can say about Madera Cove or Snug Harbor is, we've got a more complicated situation than this. We're going to have some facilities across the way from our exit. I don't know if you're familiar, but when we come out of our exit, we don't have a cut across 150th Avenue. So if we want to go west towards the beach out of our condo unit, we have to make a right-hand turn out of our condo complex, then turn into the Marina, make a U-turn into Marina, come back out on 150th, and then make a left onto 150th Avenue to go west. When we come to our condo from the east, we have to come across the Causeway, turn in at the Boca Siega Cut, make a U-turn there, and then make an immediate right-hand turn into our condo complex. This is the situation we've had since the condo was built in about 23. So, you know, we've got, we've got a complex situation getting in and out that's going to be exacerbated by the development that takes place on 150th Avenue, Madera Way, down towards Gulf Boulevard. What I've done is put together a presentation, we can pull it up here. I think I might need some help doing this.
He's right behind you.
I think I've lost it again. When these projects first came online, starting a year or so ago, we were concerned very much with the, the traffic that would be created by the projects. These projects were quite large. They have been scaled back since then, but they're still quite large projects. We took a look at the traffic studies that were done. This is the, I think, probably the third rendition of the traffic studies that have been done here along the Boulevard. So, this is basically a critique of what, what we see in these traffic studies. The first section here describes, let's see if I can get this to come up a little bit, describes the situation on 150th Avenue. And we think that there are things that needed to be considered in these studies that were not studied, and we think the traffic consultant failed to consider a number of issues. The Causeway is not like any other Causeway or any other highway in, probably in Pinellas County. The fact that a drawbridge is on that causes a large number of problems for the Causeway. And what's interesting about that, when you look at the Causeway and you look at the drawbridge, that's the most salient feature, and that's not mentioned in any of the documents I've seen that have come from the traffic consultant. When we've looked at that, I kind of overview this, so occasionally go out there and look and see what's going on with the drawbridge. Typically, the bridge is open for five to seven minutes per draw, and during that whole time, traffic is stopped, and traffic begins to back up in, in both, both directions. Traffic routinely will be back up to Gulf Boulevard, sometimes, you know, up and down Gulf Boulevard. It backs up also going in the other direction towards Doomi Road, you know, over towards Bay Pines. It's, you know, it's an issue for people getting on the, on the island and also getting off. These interruptions are especially detrimental to traffic flow at peak hour times. This past Friday, you know, peak hours seem to be early in the afternoon, I think. I looked at it around 3 o'clock, and the bridge was up, and traffic was all backed up along the Causeway, and it started to clear up. This was in the, you know, westbound lane, because people were coming home at that time. And then the bridge went up again at around 3:30, and, you know, did the same thing over again during, you know, what I would call, you know, peak period of the day, particularly on a Friday afternoon when people tried to go home earlier. FD, I had these conversations with FDOT folks, and I said, "What would you have to do if you were going to analyze the impact of the..." Guess I don't have the right touch here. "What would you do if you were going to analyze the impact of the, of the, of the bridge on traffic on 150th Avenue?" They'd said, "Well, you'd have to look at opening frequency by day of week and time of day and week of the year to get a sense of that." You'd look the length of the traffic backup in terms of time. You'd look at the length of the traffic backup miles to the east, the north, and the west. And it seems to me that, you know, given the kind of highway you have here, these are things that should have been considered when the traffic studies were done. The state considers this an interrupted highway. It doesn't have free flow on it. It's interrupted because of the traffic lights on that highway. If the state had their druthers, they'd like to take all the traffic lights out and just let the stuff flow. But as John has said, you know, that can't be done. We'd have to slow this traffic down so people can get inside and out of their developments, and so that people can cross the street if they're pedestrians. So this is, you know, to this idea that the traffic study never considered the drawbridge is a huge drawback in terms of it being a full-fledged study of what actually happens here on the Causeway. There are also some other factors that were not considered in this, the studies. How school, school drop-off interrupts traffic flow. As most of you probably know, if you use the highway, the school, you know, has backups and tie-ups, and there's some constraints on the Doomi intersection when, you know, kids are coming to school or when they're going home. There's also the impact of people coming from the north through the city that they use, they use Madera Way as a shortcut to get onto 150th Avenue. There are a lot of people that live, you know, north of the city, particularly in the Yacht Club, there are nearly 300 residences there that would be affected by the changes that have been recommended for Madera Way. It's also, the city, you know, this, this roadway, the traffic on the Causeway is also the primary entrance and exit for a lot of people who live in Reddington Beach and also in North Reddington. It's a, it's a vital traffic route, you know, for a lot of residents, not just those people who live in Madera Beach. And none of this was considered in the traffic studies, the three traffic studies that, you know, I've seen thus far. We think the consultant fails to collect some critical data. Not sure what quite my touch is here. I need to get a drink of water. There were some data points that were left out of the study. Well, the first thing you can say about the study, it was based upon a, about a one-hour snapshot of traffic within the city. So the, the sample size on this is very, very, very small. Madera Beach Marina intersection with 150th Avenue is not considered in the study. The Snug Harbor condominium intersection with 150th was not considered in the study. First Street Southeast intersection with 150th Avenue was not considered in the study. Data was not gathered there. Municipal Drive intersection with Madera B, with Madera Way was not analyzed in the study. Another item that was not looked at was the impact of traffic if the speed limit, for any reason, on 150th Avenue was reduced to 35 miles an hour because of congestion and safety concerns. This has an impact upon the level of service characteristics of the road. This is another issue that's in there. As we went through the development agreement, it allows a developer to structure the condos as condo hotels. This is in recital and in the agreement. The difference, the major difference in terms of traffic for a condo hotel is that the loading factor for traffic is much higher for a condo hotel than it is for a regular condo unit. Condo hotel units are more, can be characterized as transient in nature, they're more likely to be, well, they're set up to be rented out. And I think the manner in which those condo units are sold, condo hotel units are sold is different than a condo unit would be sold. So, you know, one of the things that the traffic study did not take into consider was the impact that condo hotel designations possible would have on the, the traffic conditions, the amount of traffic generated on the highway. This is, gives you an example of how traffic would vary depending upon whether you have condo units that are sold or condo hotel trips. So, a typical condo unit will generate 4.17 daily trips per unit, whereas a condo hotel generates approximately twice as much as that. And that was not one of the things that's considered in, in the traffic studies that had been created, done so far. I know, we'll make it to page four here, I think. I don't know, is the tech guy still here? Let's try this and see. Okay, let's try this and see. Okay, here we go. You know, the traffic on the 150th Avenue is, is a function of several things. The current traffic load on the highway, and the consultant captured that data during peak hours, peak traffic hours, which is, I guess, 6:00 PM on a daily basis. You're going to have the traffic load generated by new residential development on the site. These are the condos, the hotel rooms, and the possible condo hotel occupancies on the, on the highway. There's traffic load generated by the new commercial occupancies on the site, the retail and the restaurants, and that's not addressed in the traffic study at all. There's no mention of that in the traffic study. There's traffic generated by developments currently in the planning or construction stage. You know, Holton Project is not considered in this study. Sliced Pizza is getting ready to open up, and that's going to generate traffic. There's a Holiday Inn Express at Bay Pines, that's going to generate traffic. None of that's considered in these studies at all. One of the problems with the study is that these, it focuses entirely on this one development. And what you have to do is you have to take a macro view of what's changing here in the city, not only with this development, but other developments that occur in conjunction with it. And none of that's considered in the city, in, in this study. So we have known traffic and known developments that are, that's taking place now. We know some information about that. We have information about some of that, but not all of it. But there's also stuff we don't know anything about, but we know could take place here. And none of that's considered in this traffic study. It's not considered in the previous versions of the Holton Project that I've looked at also. And this needs to be, this needs to be analyzed in a pretty comprehensive way. You know, there's a possibility that the Wind Dixie Plaza could be redeveloped in a, in a different kind of configuration, which would have a different, you know, traffic patterns than what's taking place now. The Gulf Boulevard area from Madera Way to 153rd Street, there's, you know, some vacant lots there, some underutilized occupancies there now that could be redeveloped, redeveloped in some way. I guess I'd say that, you know, once this redevelopment takes place here on Madera Way, it's likely to encourage other developers to take a look at what's taking place, and there's a whole new, there'll be other people looking at doing development here, and all that has the potential for creating traffic. But none of that's been looked at in the traffic studies that have been done so far. There could be mixed-use commercial and parking redevelopment on the south side of 150th Avenue between First Street Southeast and Madera Cove. You know, we know that's been talked about by, you know, some developers or quasi-developers here in the city. If you look at, we haven't looked at parking. It's something that needs to be looked at also. There's quite a lot of parking now in this core, along 150th Avenue on the north side, also down towards Madera Way. Brown Box is a good example of that. All of that surface parking is going to go away. Now, the developer has included parking in its, in its development that meets the standards here. But I think the kind of, the kind of thing we're talking about here, we're going to lose some surface parking, and I don't think we're going to make up all of that parking that's lost in the, in the developments that are taking place. Number five on here is, there's mixed-use commercial and parking garage development that possibly could take place on First Street Southeast. And there's infill development that could take place from John's past to 150th Avenue, which also contributes to, to the traffic situation in the city. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that you need to take a macro view of what this traffic is all about here. And right now, we're not taking a macro view. We're just looking at this one project, and I think later on you'll look at the Holton Project. But that's only a smidgen, perhaps, of the development that could take place here. My sense is that when you start loading in the traffic from the Holton Project and the traffic that's going to take place with this project here, you know, you're going to use up all your LOS allowance that could take place here. And I'll, I'll explain this a little bit more here. The report also failed to consider the traffic impact of 40,000, 45,000 square feet of new retail, commercial, and restaurant space planned for the project. There's no attempt to analyze how this commercial building will impact, will impact the, the amount of traffic generated. I guess the general argument for remodeling downtown is that all new structures and occupancies will create a more vibrant environment, that's going to attract more people to the city core, revitalize the area like St. Armond Circle in Sarasota. My wife told me I should probably take that out, because when we've been down to St. Armond Circle, it's, it's, it's a pretty congested place. Circle, it's a, it's a pretty congested place. The developers proposed need to replace what I would call low-volume mom-and-pop operations with higher-volume retailers and restaurants. I think they're banking on the fact that they'll, you know, you'll have a fixed base of people willing to use these new facilities, but you're also going to, you know, attract a much larger number of local residents and people outside the city coming to the central core. In terms of the current commercial space that's out there, some of it's been vacant for an extended period of time, thus generating very little or no traffic over periods of time. And the consultant's report does not compare the current amount of commercial space to propose 45,000 square feet of commercial space. This is some trip analysis of the proposed developments. This is the commercial space and the amount of peak hour traffic it's likely to create. These trip generation factors are taken from transportation guidebooks. Some of these were used by the traffic consultant, some of these were added to what he had prepared. This is an attempt to look at the project in its entirety and see how it stacks up against the level of service benchmark for, you know, for the area. So we have the current traffic, that's taken from the consultant's report. We have the hotel rooms that will generate a certain amount of traffic. We've got some traffic figures in there for the condo and condo hotel units. We've got some counts in there for the retail. We have the Holden Project, which we don't know what that's likely to generate, but it could be significant. You know, we mentioned earlier Slice and Holiday Express incoming online that will generate traffic. Snug Harbor is our condo unit, doesn't, we have 48 units there during the peak hours. It, you know, could result in 16 trips. There's no data in here about the City Marina. The City Marina's been refurbished in the last year or so, looks like it's pretty well-filled up. So you have day trippers coming in there who bring their own boats, you know, park and load up, and then you have also the people who have, you know, slips there at the Marina. So it's become a busier place than it was before. The other zero in there is for unknown projects that could occur that I talked about earlier. What we're doing is we're getting pretty close to the level of service benchmark, which is C, that Department of Transportation recognizes, and this is the benchmark that the city is trying to achieve. So with this project here and some unknowns up there, we're about 88% of the traffic capacity of what, for that LOS C level. The current project will drive traffic to 88% of the maximum of the Level D benchmark threshold. The current development will increase peak hour traffic on 150th Avenue and Gulf Boulevard by at least 25, 23%. In the tables that FDOT uses, they have a designation of E and F. Once you, once you get on a arterial like 150th Avenue, once you get to that D level, which would be 35, 3,580 trips, it automatically goes to F, that the determination of the DOT is at that point, it becomes a pretty congested area. And that's what you're pretty much, you're at 88% of that right now. So when you begin to add in the Holden Project, I believe, you're going to be at that, you're going to be at the D threshold, which will carry you to F. So here are the recommendations I would have. I suggest the city should fund a traffic impact study per state guidelines and standards before approving the approved development. The study should be conducted by an independent and qualified traffic consultant, not to connect it to any of the property owners or developers with projects pending before the city. I think the 77th typo in there. You know, we'd like, this is, this is pretty important, what's taking place here. And if you don't get it right, we're going to wind up with a Clearwater type of situation. We're very close to that now in terms of the proposed development for just the one project, let alone the second project. If in the future, you know, anybody else, you know, comes up with projects along Gulf Boulevard, it's going to create a huge traffic issue, not only for the causeway, but also for Gulf Boulevard. So, you know, you're making decisions here that, you know, going to go well into the future. We'd like you to spend some time, you know, looking at this traffic issue in more detail than we've looked at it now. Now, I will admit that my numbers may not be exactly right. I could probably make some mistakes in this. But I think the kind of study that's been done thus far just doesn't give you the kind of answers that you can make, you know, wise and sound decisions with. And I would strongly urge you to, you know, fund an independent city and, I'm sorry, fund an independent study and see if you can get to a better understanding of what impact the traffic is going to have on this community. Can I, let me ask you a question. When, when did you, when did you get the traffic study?
This is not the time to ask questions. You can make a presentation, you cannot be asking questions.
No, I can ask questions.
No, you can't ask questions. You cannot ask questions of the board members.
That's not the way I, that's not the way I read the...
I'm telling you, they're not going to answer questions. You can make your presentation.
Okay. All right. I would like to call, as a witness, Steve, Steve Miller.
Before you have that person come up, as you're going to call as a witness, is there anybody that has any questions of Mr. Gay at this point? Any questions of him? No? Okay. He has the right to call witnesses and...
A question for you. The witness he's calling is Stephen Miller in question?
It is that same person?
Yes.
Okay. But there's a difference between calling him as a witness and him testifying as an affected party.
Okay.
And so if he's going to call him as a witness, he can ask him questions. This is not going to be a narrative where Mr. Miller just stands up and rattles on, okay? He can ask him questions, and then he can sit down when you're done asking him questions. But he doesn't, he's not going to make a narrative presentation. Do you still want to call him as a witness? He's saying that he would rather step forward and make his presentation as affected party.
Okay, but he's, he's been ruled out as an affected party?
Not yet, he is not, no.
Oh, I thought he...
No, that's going to be determined after you're done.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Well, let me say this about this process. This is a pretty rigorous process, and I know the lawyers for the developers are well-prepared to do this. I was surprised that they challenged, you know, you know, several of the people who had signed up to speak. There's, in the announcement that went out for this, it did not put any stipulation on who the affected party was. It looked like a citizen, my understanding was a citizen of Madeira Beach could be an affected party. If you were going to limit the affected parties to people who live within a certain distance from the development area, that should have been stated in the notice that was in the newspaper. So to my, to my mind, the notice was deceptive and didn't provide full information so that people could prepare themselves in the right way. My sense of this whole system of quasi-judicial is that unless, unless you're a lawyer and know the process and have gone through it, it's very difficult to, to figure out what has to be done and how you go about doing that. I know when we had the discussions about the quasi-judicial process last spring, there was some discussion and questions were asked, did anybody receive any training in the quasi-judicial process? Did the city do a workshop? Did the city do a workshop for you regarding the quasi-judicial process?
Don't answer those questions.
Did the city, these are rhetorical. Did the city provide any training to the Board of Commissioners on the quasi-judicial process? No, none of this training was provided. And as a consequence, citizens are at a disadvantage in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I don't know how much time you had to review these documents. You know, I've looked at the traffic stuff, you know, before, so I have some familiarity with it, but it's a, it's a big job to go through these documents. I can't see how, if you've only had these documents for a week or so, you can make an informed decision about the kinds of questions and about the scope of this development that's being put forward. I guess I could ask, you know, Bill Carons, how much time they spent preparing their presentations and preparing the redo of their development plan. And I suspect the number of hours and the number of experts they had putting that together, you know, vastly exceeds anything a basic citizen could do and anything, you know, volunteers sitting on the planning commission could do to fully understand what is taking place here and fully understand how this complies with the 2009 special area plan, amendments to that plan, and so forth. So, again, you have a large responsibility here. I would urge you to take your time doing this. I would urge you very much to get an independent traffic study done so you get, so we understand exactly what's taking place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person, the next two, these are people that have been challenged as affected parties. The first one is going to be Stephen Miller, and now is the opportunity for Mr. Miller to step forward and explain to this board why he believes he's an affected party. And before, before he makes his presentation, Mr. Chairman, we're going to allow the applicant to make a presentation after he has made his regarding this particular issue, and then you're going to need to make a decision as to whether or not you're going to allow him to testify as an affected party. Now, keep in mind, he will still have the opportunity to speak on behalf of himself in the public. He just won't be able to act as a party. So, so, Mr. Miller, I'm going to go over a couple of things, just so everybody understands what we're doing here. I want to, I want to read the portion of the code, I want to read a portion of the statute, and I'm going to ask for you to help us out in explaining your position on that. So the first thing is, is that you have filed a notice of intent to be an affected party, correct?
I have.
Okay. And therefore, you're presumed to be an affected person as, under that notice being sent. But the definition of affected person is as follows. The owner, resident, or occupant of the real property, which is the subject of this quasi-judicial proceeding. You're not an owner, you're not a resident, and you're not an occupant of the party that is subject to this proceeding, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the second portion is really where you're going to have to make your presentation to this board, that you're claiming you're an aggrieved or adversely affected party as the term is defined in the Florida statute, section 163, 3215.2. That's what you would have to make your argument, and I'm going to read that, okay? All right. So this is the statute. It says, "As, as used in this section, the term aggrieved or adversely affected party means any person or local government that will suffer an adverse effect to the interests protected or furthered by the local government comprehensive plan, including interests related to health and safety, police and fire protection service systems, densities or intensities of development, transportation facilities, healthcare facilities, equipment or services, and environmental and natural resources." And this is what I want you to key in on us for this board. "The alleged adverse interests may be shared in common with other members of the community at large, but must exceed in degree the general interest in community good shared by all persons." So I would ask you to focus on why you believe that your interest exceeds the degree of general interest in the community good.
My interests are in the interest of safety and transportation facilities. And in this particular case, my interest in aggravation, if you want to call it, is very similar to Mr. Lippa's aggravation. It's the traffic, it's not the traffic volume that I'm questioning, it's the traffic flow, it's the traffic pattern. And I think there's been a change to the traffic pattern that is embedded in this plan, which is causing me, and people similarly situated like me, that live above 150th, live north of 150th, live in Reddington Beach, when we want to go to the mainland, this new plan is making it less safe or less convenient to us as a group. And I'm just speaking for myself, that that is my aggravation with the plan. You know, and I'm, I'm asking for the consideration, at least to be, to see what the aggravation is, and then to do whatever you think is appropriate about it. I mean, I'm not saying reject the plan, I'm just saying, look at the problem and see if there's a better solution to it. I'm not saying anything about whether I approve of this plan or don't. I'm just trying to make some information available so that you can evaluate it and take it for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wells, do you have anything that you wanted to add in your argument before the chairman makes a decision whether or not we're going to treat Mr. Miller as an affected person?
Thank you, yes. I, you know, Mr. Miller, I just used the word similarly situated, and I think what he's presented to the commission for consideration of his party status is that he shares the same interests as other members of the community as to how this plan is going to impact traffic flow. I would submit that he should be allowed to speak during public comment as a member of the public, but not as an affected party. I did not hear any testimony that he would be impacted to a degree different than the impact to the general community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, you need to make the decision now, based upon those two arguments, whether or not you're going to allow Mr. Miller to testify as an affected party. And if so, he can continue on. If not, he needs to sit down, and then when you call up the public, he can testify at that point.
Okay, just based on what you've said here tonight, I don't think your interest is any different than anybody else's. So I'm not going to allow him.
Okay. So you've been found not to be an affected party, so you'll have an opportunity to speak in just a few minutes, though, as a resident. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, now, we have a similar question that we need to address for Sam Baker. Mr. Baker, are you here? Yes. Mr. Baker, do you still want to testify as an affected party, or do you want to testify as someone from the public?
Well, let's try me. Here's my certificate.
Okay. So I have the same question for you, then. Under the statute, you've heard me explain it before, can you explain to the chairman why you believe that your interest exceeds the degree of general interest in the community?
I believe I do. I believe I do. I'm a Korean War Disabled Veteran, and I spend a large amount of time traversing from my home in Madeira Beach to VA across the way. And what I'm a little bit concerned about, I get over there, as we all do, what I'm concerned about is the additional traffic is going to make my trip even more difficult.
Anything else you wanted to add? Okay. Ms. Wells, do you have anything else that you wanted to present to the board with regard to Mr. Baker's? He's right, he's right, right behind you, so don't step back, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trust, Mr. Chairman. Same argument with regard to Mr. Baker. And Mr. Baker, when we looked at his home address and the distance from our project, it was over 4,000 feet from our project. So I would submit that the traffic flow, the traffic pattern, the volume that he just mentioned, that that, he would share that interest with the community at large and is not impacted to a greater degree. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, again, you're going to need to make that decision. Do you believe that he should have affected party status? And if not, he needs to sit down and wait until the public has an opportunity to speak.
Again, I don't think he has any more interest than anybody else, so I can't give you the affected party status. Sorry.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay. So I don't know if you want to, you've been going for two and a half hours. If you want to take a five-minute break, I'm sure everybody's looking for that, then what we would do is, is we would come back, we're going to hear from the public, who would like to make presentations, the rebuttal by the applicant in the city, and then a summary before you'll make your recommendation to the commission. So a five-minute break, is that acceptable?
Everybody want to take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll be back, then, at 9:37. We're going to start back at 9:37.
Presented with the removal of the left-hand turn signal at Madeira Way and 150th. Right now, this is the way that many people, almost everybody that lives in the yacht club, on Harbor Drive, if they want to go to McDonald's or go to the Publix, they currently go on Municipal Drive, go to Madeira Way, take a left, go to the light, take a left and go in, or go into Madeira, go into, over the bridge. With the new plan, that light is not eliminated now. It wasn't being eliminated. Now it's gonna, something's gonna stay there only for pedestrians. But it's being eliminated, and what we're supposed to be doing now, according to this plan, the only safe way to get to that destination is to go onto Madeira Way, take a right, hit the light there at Gulf Boulevard, take a left, hit the light at 150th, take a left and go into, across the bridge. That light at Madeira Way and Gulf Boulevard cycles right now about three cars. All right? It's about, how many cars can get through that, on that turn? With the change in the traffic pattern, there is an unconstrained movement from westbound 150th to Gulf Boulevard through Madeira Way. So there still will be the through traffic going through there. Now, they might try to slow it down by speed bumps and things, but it still is unconstrained. So that traffic's still gonna be there. They're gonna reduce that road down from two lanes to one lane. I don't think the traffic study actually simulated that in its traffic studies, how long that light will have to cycle in order to get the traffic through. All that traffic is gonna go in that direction, because nobody's gonna wanna go out and onto Gulf Boulevard and take a left-hand turn with no light. I would ask you to kinda consider this in your planning, and maybe put a stipulation into the plan, that until I can demonstrate that that's a safe, fairly convenient, not utterly convenient, but a safe way for that traffic to occur, that they don't remove the light at 150th and Madeira Way, and don't remove the left-hand turn until I can demonstrate that the other pattern is working. This would also be something that might help the people on condos, is that leaving that light there until they can actually get a light where they want it, will at least stop the traffic as it does now, not make the situation any worse. So that's all I wanted to say. If you would consider that stipulation, I would be appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Derwin Smith. I own and operate the Madeira Beach Marketplace where the post office is and the shops along Madeira Way. I've done this for 44 years. It's needless for me to say how excited I am that there's something that's going to happen in Madeira Beach, finally. But I wanna address some concerns. I know some people have some concerns about my site, my property, what might be happening. Recently, there was an email circulated speculating that maybe I was gonna build a hotel, and I just wanna let everybody know, that's never been a fact, it's not going to happen. I'm happy that there's going to be a hotel across the street and one next to us. As a result of my cooperating with the city of Madeira Beach for the last two years, and allowing them to provide secure parking on my site, behind the shops during special events, I've come to the conclusion that it's worth looking into, the possibility of providing parking with public access. And I just wanted to let you know that as far as what's happening on my property and any questions, that I am exploring that opportunity. I have no information at this point to be able to provide for you as to what might happen, but I thought it was worth bringing up, because everybody seems to be concerned with parking. That would not mean eliminating the post office or any of the retail. It would be addition, parking in addition to that. You know, I've had questions asked regarding, what am I gonna do if I'm going to do anything to upgrade the appearance of the old shopping center? And of course I will. You know, we have no desire to be the ugly duckling, or the pair of brown shoes proverbially attached to a black tuxedo. We wanna be upscale, we wanna be part of this as it's developed, and it's just too early for me to have any decisions at that point, and to be able to help you with what we may be planning. I'm excited about this. After you've been here for, entering my 45th year in 2017, I can't wait for this to get started. I appreciate what you do as commissioners. I compliment you and give you my kudos for being on this commission. And may God bless you with your deliberations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Soliba. I'm a resident of Harbor Drive, and I, I'm also very pleased and excited about the proposed development. I will find a way to McDonald's and Publix even, post-development. I did wanna make a few comments, though, on this whole process, because I would encourage the commission not to delay this any longer. You know, there was a time, I think maybe 2003, maybe most of you remember, where Boca Vista residents were not happy about Snug Harbor development. So I find it ironic that, you know, half of the folks here might not be here, you know, if society was allowed to play out as it has. You know, we can't make the decisions. If a developer wants to develop a lawful development, I appreciate the fact that we can have constructive dialogue about it and offer opinions, but that's as far as it goes. So I, I think that, you know, the developer, the applicant, has made unnecessary and unreasonable changes to their development, but they've done so because they're listening. Maybe the developers of the South Side condos at the time, had they listened, they wouldn't have the ingress egress issues they're struggling with now. You know, I don't know. But, you know, I, I think it's worth being said, that if we find a way to continue to delay this, or gum up this development, that we're gonna have a hard time finding developers that wanna do business in Madeira Beach. When I moved to Harbor Drive, there was only a handful of year-round residents on the street, and it's through your efforts and good development that now there's only a handful of houses that aren't year-round. So I'd encourage you to continue to do that. I have a five-year-old, there's still no more trick-or-treaters on the street, but, you know, keep doing what you're doing, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Bachinsky. I live on 148th Street. I am a homeowner. Three things, not three minutes. Somebody mentioned Madeira Way. I'm glad folks will be able to get to McDonald's. I'm not worried about those folks. I'm worried about the people who are gonna be coming to the hotels, staying, getting lost, perhaps driving into the neighborhood that is south of 150th Street. We have lots of children in the area, people getting lost. Would like to have the committee think about alternatives to getting rid of the stoplight. Number two, I kept hearing that the, the Madeira Way is pedestrian-friendly, however, the park is situated at Gulf and 150th Street, two auto-centric areas. Perhaps the developer could consider using the park area at Madeira Way to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And then last but not least, height restrictions. I thought the 209 statute was for three stories over BFE. I could've read it wrong, but I just wanted to mention that. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Pete Trot, and I live on 145th. One problem that occurred because of poor planning is, when the Holiday Inn disappeared, 149 rooms disappeared, and all those people that brought money to purchase with the merchants and whatever, we killed them. It's very hard to make a living without people there to spend the money. And I think the hotels will bring that back. I think it's very important. I'm not sure that everybody doesn't have the right and the expertise beyond what I have. However, there's a big commitment for this development. This development is gonna put the company, or the city back to where they can support the businesses that we want to have here, and I think that without the hotels, as far as the extra condominiums, I don't think they make, make much difference. I would rather see the hotels and forget the condos. But, you know, I'm not sure that all the members on this board have even looked at every page. And I think maybe it's important that you do, but I think that the development that is redone, I think it is much better than the first development. I think the hotels are gonna bring this hotel, or this city back to where people can make a living here. And I've watched the buildings deteriorate, and the traffic deteriorate, and I agree, there's gonna be a lot more traffic on the roads, and that's something you're gonna have to deal with. But I think that's your job, is to deal with it. I support the Carnes. I haven't seen the Holton, but I think it's something to get some money back, get some circulation going around, and the mistakes that were made at Snug Harbor, and those were mistakes. To get rid of the Holiday Inn was a big mistake. 149 rooms rented all the time and full. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Rick Cupcall. I own the tackle shop at 390 150th Avenue, so I am directly affected by the development that Mr. Carnes has proposed.
The microphone.
Being here since 98, May 1st when I opened, losing the Holiday Inn like we did, where Snug Harbor is now, used to be a miniature golf course, which a lot of people don't remember used to be there. The Lever Rocks was still at the foot of the bridge. To lose that amount of foot traffic when you're a small mom and pop like we are, was huge. To see what Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton have a chance to do here, to bring back that type of tourism and the traffic that we would see, I am 100% what Mr. Holton is behind, and Mr. Carnes. To see the revised plans that he made from the original one, to what he has proposed now, it's amazing to see a developer in his position that would be willing to give that much back, to try to satisfy what the other people in our community have asked him to do, to scale it down. As a small mom-and-pop business owner, I look forward to being invited back to his property when it is done, and I would love to come back and still be a part of this community after 20 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back?
Good evening. My name is Jim Everett. I live at 15458 First Street East, and I have sat where you sit. This project has been reviewed once before, and I think when we look at the reductions that the developer has voluntarily done here, it's fairly incredible. I mean, the amount of money that he's gonna give up in the development just to accommodate the concerns that have been expressed is remarkable. The good news is, is I didn't hear anything about height, which is good. I heard a lot about traffic. One of the things I did hear about traffic was that the Holton numbers were not included in the traffic study, and that was not my understanding. My understanding was that it was included in the traffic study, so I'd encourage you to look at that. The other comments were made about the increased trips based on a condo tell. I don't think that takes into consideration the way people today travel. I think most people, certainly younger folks, when they travel, they don't rent a car, they use Uber, they use Lyft, they use public transportation. So I think you'll see fewer trips for those short-term rentals as we go into the future. I also don't think the traffic, the study takes into consideration the upcoming and rapidly moving development of automated vehicles. I think traffic is going to be going down as far as trips are concerned over time. So I would ask you to consider that as well. But mainly, I'd ask you to consider the improvements and the beautification. Just trying to walk on a sidewalk out there on 150th, if a, if a F-250 drives by with his mirror out, and you're too close to that sidewalk, he'll knock your head off. So now we're talking about 12, 12-foot wide sidewalks, beautiful palm trees. I think it's a fantastic improvement, and it's, it's a huge advancement in safety for our community. So I'd encourage you to move forward with this, and, and I would also encourage you to no longer delay, because our economy is fragile, and we never know when, when the developers will not be available to move forward. Plus, both of these developers are local. They live here locally, they work here locally, they're not somebody who's coming from out of town to try to make a buck. So I'd encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hey, everybody. Jeff Beggins, Century Torn and Beggins here in town. I wanna just touch on a couple of points for you. First of all, thanks for all the service that you guys are doing to see this. And I think we kinda get lost at the point of tonight, is to make sure that it, it fits into what the city and the codes allow, right? And I think we went through this once before, and we found that it does meet the codes of what the city allows, and in fact, it's smaller than it was before. So I think that's pretty nice and clear to see that, which is great, and I think that was an amazing move to emphasize what Jim just said. I mean, these guys, I know the real estate market right now, and it is a fragile market right now, but it's, right today, is very hot, and these guys could easily turn this over to some other group who would just do nothing but maximize it, sell it, and take the money out of town and run. Well, you got people who actually care. I mean, you, you see the parks, you see all the things that Mr. Carnes has done for this town, and he obviously cares about the community. So I think we've hit the benchmarks, seeing that this does fit what's allowed here. I think it's fantastic for them actually doing what they're doing, to listen for this, to the residents that they don't really want. And I think the resistance that we heard about parking, or traffic today, is of course a valid concern, but I think when you take into consideration the expert testimony, and I'll stress the word expert, of people who are trained and studied and educated with degrees in, in traffic studies, when they performed in these studies, taking into consideration both projects, that takes a little more weight than people that are just speculating on an Excel spreadsheet of what may happen, without any educational background behind that. So I know you guys will take that into consideration, and I think this is great, and I really do urge you to keep this moving while we still have a real estate market strong enough to absorb it. So thanks again for your work, and I hope we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Terry Wilfong, and I live in Madeira Beach, and I, I just have a comment. I agree with the fellow who said that, I worked for a real estate developer for 13 years, and traffic studies are done by developers for the developer's interest. I support the city getting an independent study, because it does appear that there are developments that would come online that would increase the flow of traffic, and it's, it's bad now. So I, I just wanna say that I support the city getting a, an independent traffic study. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I am, I am a resident here in Madeira Beach. I've been here for four years. I'm also a business owner here in Madeira Beach. Actually, I am...
Could you tell us your name, sir?
My name is Luis Camacho, and my business is on 392 150th Avenue, so it's right there on the property where it's gonna be developed. And before I even tried to go into business, I looked at the market here, and it's tough, let me tell you. I've seen many businesses go out, go out of business since I've been here, a lot of them. I've seen many spaces that are empty, they've never been rented for the last four years. So I think it's, it's good that we're gonna bring this, us, the residents, we need this, we need a place that we can go sit down and, and, you know, share with, with the other people. I, I think it's really nice. And to me, I was, I was very scared when this whole thing started, but after meeting Mr. Carn and seeing what the gentleman just said, that he's local, that he worries, that he's listening, that he is willing to accommodate, to make it work, to make sure that everybody's happy, the traffic, yeah, it is, yeah, it could be an issue, but it could be addressed, it could be fixed, you know? So all we need to do is make it work for everybody. I understand that people live across, I know it's, it's hard for them to get in and out, it's hard for us to go into that property right now. We have to make illegal, illegal U-turns to go into the property, or go through the back. I mean, it, it's complicated as it is, but I, it, we just need to make it work, and after we can make the traffic work, I think, I think it's gonna be really, really nice for Madeira Beach to see that we need that, there's nothing here. And, you know, you have to go to Jones Pass, and I think, I like Jones Pass, but I think it's very touristy. I think we can have something for us, for the residents, and for the tourists at the same time, and we can all enjoy this, and I, I think, I think it's a wonderful thing what they're doing, and how he is listening to us, and that's very important. Some people don't listen, they just care about their pocket, and he's listening, so that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, for that, we're gonna close. Public comment?
Right now, it, it's time for rebuttal by the applicant.
Thank you, Tom. I'm gonna try and read my, my scribble as I was taking notes while different folks were speaking. What I heard were a lot of concerns with regard to the flow of traffic. I would remind the commission that all movements are at a level Service C, and that will not be lowered on 150th Avenue. And ultimately, the improvements that we complete, that my client will complete in the right of way, has to be permitted by the FDOT, has to be approved by the FDOT. It's not for this commission or the Board of Commissioners to dictate what those improvements will actually be. We have to work with the FDOT on that. So at, at this point, we've, we've got a traffic study that confirms the level of service will not be lowered, and our development agreement requires us to work with FDOT and get those permits on how those off-site roadway improvements will look like in the end. What we're proposing to the commission, and what we're proposing in the development agreement are, is a concept based upon meetings with FDOT to date. But I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. We'll, we won't be in a position tonight, or before the Board of Commissioners, to finalize those improvements, because those will be addressed during the permitting stage prior to each phase of development. They can't be addressed at this point in time, not to the level of detail that the community would like. I heard that there were concerns about the safety of entry, exiting onto, or from Madeira Cove onto 150th Avenue, from Snug Harbor onto 150th Avenue. Again, all issues to be addressed during the permitting stage when we get the FDOT permits. There was speculation about the impact of the Holton project on the daily trips resulting in a level of service F. I have no idea where that came from, how they even arrived at that conclusion. Our traffic study confirms that the level of service will be maintained on both 150th Avenue and Gulf Boulevard. You know, those kind of comments are speculative, they're not relevant, and should not be considered as you make your decision. There was also speculation about what this project may trigger in the way of additional development down the road. Again, speculation, not relevant. There was a discussion about loss of surface parking. Our development agreement requires us to comply with the city's parking requirements, and the table shows all the parking that's gonna be provided for the hotel units, for the condo units, for the restaurants, the retail, the marina. We comply with that, in some places, we exceed that. So I don't know, again, I think the loss of, of surface parking discussion, a little bit of speculation there as well. There was speculation about how much time the developers' team spent on, on getting ready for tonight's presentation. Again, not relevant. And then there was a term thrown out that the condos would actually be condo hotels. No, the condos will be condos. They will be individually owned by individual owners, and yes, they will have the ability to do short-term rentals, that is not converted into a condo hotel. So that is what I wanted to address. I would like Mr. Pergalisi to get up for a few minutes and go through some of the details that were stated by Mr. Gay that are not factual, are not relevant. We just wanna clarify that for the record, and with that, I'll turn it over to Robert. Thank you.
Good evening again. Robert Pergalisi with Gulf Coast Consulting, and I will be preparing or presenting rebuttal to some of the statements that were made. First, let me start by saying that this is not the first time that I have worked for a developer whose projects have ruffled some feathers in the area, and it certainly won't be the last. It's not the first time that I've had people come up and complain about traffic in the area, and make statements about studies that we've prepared, and I'm sure it won't be the last. When we do these traffic studies, we do them based on the development levels we are given by our client, the developer, and the expected changes that he would seek to make, and we are asked, does this work, or does this not work? And then we put in our reports recommendations, and those recommendations we expect to be followed, those recommendations we take to the Department of Transportation in this case, or local government in any other cases if you're not on a state road, and we turn those into actual improvements. For FDOT traffic studies for FDOT permits, we're required to look at the driveway connections to the public roadways. So let's think about that. In this case, there would be two driveway connections to 150th Avenue, one driveway connection opposite Boca Vista, where the marina is, where the marina is proposed, another access to 150th Avenue at the meeting opening opposite Madeira Cove, between condo A and B, and then along Madeira Way, where the hotels, Hotel A on one side, Hotel B on the other, and I always forget which is which, will come out onto Madeira Way. We'd be looking at three intersections for an FDOT permit traffic study. In this case, we went well above and beyond. We looked at 150th and Boca Vista, I'm going east to west, 150th and Madeira Cove, we looked at 150th and a meeting opening at a little shopping center on the south side of the road, we looked at the traffic signal at 150th and Madeira Way, the traffic signal at Gulf Boulevard and 150th, and then we also looked at the traffic signal up at Gulf Boulevard and Madeira Way. If you were not on a state road, and you were just looking at any road in the county or any, any city, absent of any standards, we would then look at the Pinellas County MPO standards. Coincidentally, at the same time we were preparing this analysis in February, Pinellas County was adopting a multimodal mobility fee ordinance. They call it the MMF, MMF, MMMFO, three Ms, okay? That sets out standards for analyses. Fees paid by the developer in this case, in accordance with that ordinance, would be over $900,000, which would go towards improvements that are gonna be made on these roadways. That ordinance states that a detailed study is not required unless you are, are on a deficient roadway segment, which we are not, because Pinellas County MPO classifies Tom Stewart Causeway, where they call it the Madeira Beach Causeway, as a level of service C roadway, which our findings have confirmed. Second of all, project... Second of all, project traffic would need to exceed 300 peak hour trips for a study to be required. So under Pinellas County standards, we wouldn't even be doing a study. We're doing one based on FDOT requirements for a future permit that we seek. As Kate mentioned, the condos are condos, they're not condo hotels. So any testimony about different trip generation characteristics are irrelevant. We evaluated those as condos. I wanna talk about the drawbridge. In previous testimony before this board and the Board of Commissioners, I've always said, when the drawbridge goes up, it causes problems. We understand that. That's just a fact of life. That is not, that is not a normal situation that we look at. It is an interrupted arterial. We'll be reducing the interruption by removing that, that left turn movement from Madeira Way onto 150th Avenue. We would be reducing the constant interruption to that traffic flow along 150th Avenue. It would only be interrupted by pedestrian actuation, as I spoke about earlier, when a pedestrian wants to safely cross 150th Avenue from the south side to the north side. And I hope Mr. Lepa does that a wa- a lot. The retail that is out there exists, okay? We did all of our traffic counts in February of last year, when the retail shops, the post office, all of those were, were active, and we used that as base traffic. The retail that exists out there right now is about 63,000 square feet. It's being replaced by about 40,000, 45,000 square feet of retail and restaurants along Madeira Way. So when we added additional traffic from our project, we added our project traffic on top of the existing. We didn't take out anything for the retail we were demolishing. Otherwise, that would be double counting, and would lead to higher projections than what we would expect. Mr. Holton's project is included in this report. I've testified to that previously, I'll testify to it again. It is included in this report, in however many shapes or forms, because it keeps getting reduced. We prepared this report November 1st, it was submitted to the city November 4th. I don't know how long you've had your package for, but it was, that was the deadline that we needed to meet. And I believe Mr. Holton just submitted a new application last Friday, right? With further reduced traffic. I wanna state that for the folks at Snug Harbor, okay, they have a right turn in, right turn out only, so they need to make U-turns as they testified to. Anybody going to and from Snug Harbor was counted in our traffic that we took counts at along 150th Avenue at the Boca Vista median opening, if they're making U-turns or whatnot. And I will say that they will continue to be able to use the city marina to turn into, to make U-, to make their turns to come back out and go west towards, towards the beach. I think someone mentioned that they had a concern, can they continue to do that? They will continue to do that. Someone asked me that question last Tuesday at the neighborhood meeting we had, and I answered, that was the case. Mr. Holton and his project, he's gonna have access to the city marina to get to that median opening over there. He's actually gonna be making improvement to that turn lane, but that movement will not be taken away. The traffic study evaluates the signal at Gulf Boulevard and Madeira Way. I heard someone testify that it's impossible to get out there, it only takes three cars. That intersection operates at level of service B. That is in our traffic study. The signal timings always get adjusted, they're, they're, they're actuated traffic signals. So if there's demand, it extends the green light. And as we go through these studies, if signal timing changes are recommended, we talk those over with FDOT, so that the optimum signal timings are implemented. And they go into the cabinet, you know, those big cabinets, and they, they push the buttons. They handle that, not me. Another thing, and it has to do with the traffic generation. We took raw traffic generation from each of these components of this development. One thing that was not taken into account, which is why we believe our study is more conservative, is this concept of internal capture. And I know somebody heard this before, earlier in the year, but for those of you that have not, when you have complementary uses like condos and restaurants and, and things like that, people don't always use their car to go in and out. But the trip rates that we use in our studies are based on driveway counts from restaurants, retail stores, condos, in isolation. So in, in this particular instance, if someone from condo A and condo B wants to go to retail shop along Madeira Way, they're not gonna take their car. They're gonna get out and walk, which is exactly what we want them to do and exactly what the city plan envisions them doing. But in our analysis, we consider it a vehicle trip. So there's a little bit of conservatism in there. Finally, uh, future developments. If future developments come online, they'll need to do their own studies in accordance with the city process. The reason we did a study for this report is because the PD required a study be done. When we go to get our FDOT permits, we'll have to submit a full and complete analysis along with roadway improvement plans that are gonna show the turn lane extensions and turn lane additions I talked to about earlier, and the DOT will be making the decision on that. We're confident that they're gonna agree that the improvements that we're proposing are gonna be for the benefit of all. You happy to answer any questions?
Any questions?
That concludes rebuttal.
Questions? No? Think we're good? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kate, do you have any other rebuttal witnesses? No? Okay. So, and, and I've talked to Michelle, there is no rebuttal from the city. Um, so now, um, if the applicant wants to give a brief summary, and the city can give a brief summary, and then we're, we're done, and then we're gonna have to talk about two possible recommendations relative to the zoning and the development agreement.
Thank you, Tom, and I promise this will be brief. I've been striking out a whole bunch of stuff that I had planned to say. You heard testimony this evening from Michelle Orton, that the city adopted the special area plan to reinforce the Madeira Beach Town Center as a vibrant place to visit and live, and to connect this area by design initiatives that create a sense of place. The special area plan recognized one of the challenges in achieving this goal was the existing ownership pattern with multiple individual owners or leaseholders of land and buildings. The development that is before you provides a unique opportunity to achieve the goals and objectives of the special area plan. This application includes 21 separate parcels and proposes the type of mixed-use project at a density and intensity permitted under the special area plan, which will create the sense of place intended by the plan. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the applications before you provide for development in compliance with the standards that were in place prior to the 2014 amendments to the comprehensive plan and special area plan. This was a business decision by my client in response to feedback received from the community. As I mentioned at the outset of tonight's hearing, the commission is required to make a zoning decision, not based upon popular opinion, but based upon facts that constitute competent substantial evidence. Although some residents have shared their opinion that they have concerns over the flow of traffic that will be generated by this project, I did not hear any competent substantial evidence that the application does not meet the criteria in the city's code. On the other hand, the testimony and evidence presented by your planning staff, as well as the testimony and documentary evidence presented by Tim Clemens, Robert Pergulisi, and Cindy Terrapani constitutes competent substantial evidence that the proposed development meets the applicable criteria in your code. I thank you for your time and consideration, and respectfully request your approval on both applications. Thank you.
And in closing, staff has reviewed the application for compliance with the review criteria of Section 110-391 of the Land Development Regulations. Based on this review, staff recommends that the local planning agency approve or recommend approval of the proposed PD Plan Development Zoning District to the specific provisions and conditions set forth in the accompanying development, development agreement. A recommendation for approval would schedule a first Board of Commissioner meeting, Board of Commissioners reading on January 10th, 2017, and contingent on the first reading approval, the second and final Board of Commissioner reading on February 14th, 2017, and that is for the rezoning ordinance. Staff also has reviewed the draft development agreement for compliance, and based on this review, staff recommends that the local planning agency recommend approval of the draft development agreement to the Board of Commissioners. This would schedule a final Board of Commissioner reading on February 14th, 2017.
Okay, with that, we're back to the commission. Um, it now's the time for you to make a decision as to what you're gonna do relative to the ordinance. It would be a motion to either recommend approval to the commission on the ordinance itself, or a recommendation of denial. Those are your options. Ob- obviously, you can do it with, an approval with conditions as well, if you wanted to do that. So there would be a motion made, there would be a second, and then there would be discussion. Once you've voted on that motion, we'll move to the development agreement, we'll need a motion for that as well.
Do I have a motion?
I motion to move, recommend to the commission to move forward with this development.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And just for clarity's sake, when you, when you say that the motion is to move forward, it's a motion to approve? Is that, was your motion-
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Motion to approve, to move forward.
And at this point, do we take a vote?
If there's no discussion? Any discussion on that?
Anybody wanna discuss it? Any questions, concerns? No? We're ready to vote?
Okay, so there'd be a roll call vote then, Gwen?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we need a motion on the development agreement, whether to recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions for the development agreement itself.
Do we have a motion?
I'll recommend approval of the development agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Any discussions, questions, concerns? We're all good? We're ready to vote on that as well?
Roll call. Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence, I'm sorry. Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? And Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, so those motions have passed. We do have one other thing on the agenda tonight we'd like to move forward to. Um, that is ordinance 2017-02, this is the annual update, the capital improvement. I'd like to read that ordinance by title only. Uh, ordinance 2017-02, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, updating Madeira Beach's comprehensive plan capital improvement element to adopt an addendum to the five-year schedule of capital improvements for FY 2017 through FY 2021, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and provide an effective date. And, uh, city staff is gonna make a short presentation on this ordinance.
Uh, this review is part of the required annual review and update of the five-year schedule of capital improvements as found in the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. And based on the adopted capital improvement program that was part of the city's recently adopted budget, uh, staff has reviewed Madeira Beach's five-year CIP of any funded or unfunded projects that affect Madeira Beach, Madeira Beach's adopted levels of service for potable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, and recreation open space system. A table has been prepared from the five-year capital improvement that lists those funded and unfunded projects that might have an impact or constitute an enhancement to the adopted levels of service described above. Staff recommends that the planning commission review and recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners.
Any questions of staff on that particular ordinance?
No.
Okay, um, I would open it up to the public, Mr. Chair, um, see whether or not that there are any comments from the public on this particular agenda item.
Anybody? Comments, concerns? No? All right, we'll close that portion.
Okay, that was really quick. So we just need a motion to either recommend approval, recommend denial, or recommend approval with conditions.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
I'll second.
That is vote.
Commissioner Spildee?
Yes.
Commissioner Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? And Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, so next on the agenda, planning commission discussion, if there is any about any particular issues other than what you've heard tonight, this, um, we don't really wanna discuss that. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so we, there is, no old business, and then we move down into reports, Mr. Chair? And, um, see if the city manager has anything?
Yeah, uh, I was gonna joke around and tell you that a 20-minute report to give, but that's almost sick and not funny at this point. The only thing I'd, I'd like to say, hey, uh, Mr. Lawrence, I thought you did a good job of running the meeting tonight on short notice, so we certainly appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
In January, chances are you'll be seeing the Holton project, and I was gonna say, um, Michelle's great at what she does, but she is a one-lady show, and so at some point, staff needs some time to catch up. So he's gonna recommend, if it doesn't come in or if we're not ready, that we might not have that meeting in January. Um, chances are we'll be ready. And I, I think these two projects are separate, but related, obviously, because it's, you know, kinda gonna reinvent the north side of town here, so we wanna keep them moving. If we get to that January meeting and it does move on out of your hands, we'll probably take a month, maybe even two off, um, and, and kinda regroup and, and take some time and move on from there, because, uh, there's a lot of work to be done after, after those get out of your hands and into the hands of the Board, so Board of Commissioners. So, um, again, that January 9th meeting, uh, scheduled that, uh, tentatively. Um, Michelle, if you can make a note, and I don't know if it throws a wrinkle into things, I have a personal, uh, scheduling conflict for February 14th. Not that it's Valentine's Day, that's probably what the newspapers will report, but that's not the case. But I do have, I'll be out of the state for, out of the, out of the, yeah, I'll be out of state that day, so if we can change that meeting date, maybe a week or a day, I know we have to jive with Tom's schedule, and maybe I don't even need to be present for that.
Yeah, that's already been published.
If it's been published, then it is what it is, and I will have to figure it out. I might have to play hooky on that one, but we'll figure that out. So with that, Mr. Acting Chair, I appreciate it, and that's all I got.
And as city attorney, I don't really have any, anything addition. Um, keep in mind, you know, I represent the board, um, so if you have questions about the process today, some of you are new, give me a call, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, um, or after the meeting tonight, whichever you'd like. But remember, I'm here, although it is getting late. I, I am here to help you, so that's all I have. Oh, they, they already, you've already, you've already said, Michelle's pointing to a note that I had, I wanted to, to remind everybody about the February 14th meeting, but that's been done four times, I made a note of that, so we don't need to do that, so.
Real quick, I just wanted to announce that you all have a new planning commission book, and in that book, it has the sunshine law, and it has the ethics for, uh, planning. It has the zoning, uh, regulations that you will be working with, along with some other, um, regulations such as signs and things like that, that you can review. Uh, we also have a schedule in there for 2017. We have the special area plan and the comprehensive plan in your books. So it's a good idea to go through it, especially when you're looking at different projects. Um, my second one is, you received, um, the plans. If you could, uh, return those to me, I'd appreciate it. We have Board of Commissioner meeting that we'd like to, um, use those plans. And that's all I have.
All right, so we call the journey.
I just wanted to remind, remind you that the next meeting is currently scheduled for January 9th, before you adjourn your meeting.
Gotcha. January 9th.
Okay.
Oh, we gotta have a motion for that, too. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I need a second as well?
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.